...for that time.
Okay.
My main comment for right now, and it's not on the agenda, is at our July 5 meeting, we passed a resolution approving the discretionary grants, and there was a whole list of grants. And that, we didn't pass a resolution, we passed a motion to approve the grants as recommended by the Financial Advisory Board. There were two contingencies or kind of changes to that motion, limits to that motion. And one was that we would hold the grants back from Catholic Charities, I believe, Lift Up and Salvation Army until such time when council had a chance to have a conversation with those charities and make sure that they are not contributing to the homeless issue and the wildfire issue. I believe those conversations have taken place. I believe the mayor and councillor Ingraham met with them, and then I also met with them and had reassurances that, you know, most of the people they are serving are low-income families and people that need help with food. And I had someone stand up in our church a couple of Sundays to go, and she's a woman locally in town that actually staffs the food bank for Lift Up. And the appeal was that, hey, we're low on money for the food bank, we're low on supplies and food for our lower-income residents here, and we need extra food donations. So, that to me speaks to, if we're withholding grant monies, I think if council is okay with that, I'd like to give the head nod to our city manager to go ahead and release those funds to those three organizations. And then the second contingency was on that motion was on the, I think we withheld the grant for the kitchen remodeling in the Methodist Church, but, and that was done, I believe. Can we go ahead, is council okay to give direction to go ahead and release those funds?
I can, maybe Shelley is, because I was one of the people that was going to meet, and I did meet with Deb Wild, and I'll just sort of summarize the conversation that I had with her, and--
She the executive director of what organization?
Of--
Lift Up.
Of Lift Up.
Lift Up.
And she, it sort of proposed that she wanted to, after our meeting, meet with the heads of Catholic Charities and, I think Salvation Army, and then come back to council and report to us basically two things. One was that in sort of a coordinated effort that those organizations were, in fact, sort of not contributing to the kinds of problems that our guests that just spoke talked about, but in fact were dealing with people that had, you know, true food needs, residents of town, helping them through a difficult period, maybe where they'd lost the job. And I assured her that I thought that the full council was completely behind those kinds of efforts and that our concerns were with the possibility that we were funding the folks that were dealing with, causing the problems that were discussed, or the folks that were causing fire hazards and criminal activity on the hills. So, Deb said she would, you know, get with the other three. She said she thought that they would be very willing to come back and give council assurances on that, and I told her that if they could give us that assurance, that I'm quite certain that we would release the funds. But I also asked for this. I asked for if those organizations, assuming they believed, and Deb told me that they were very much believed, that the efforts that we were trying to do to deal with the problems of, not people that don't have food, but the people that are putting down trash and urinating in the streets and smoking pot in front of stores, that those kind of problems, that those organizations would come and publicly support this council's efforts and our police chief's efforts to be able to deal with those things. Because I think that frankly, you know, there are folks who, maybe they're well-intentioned homeless advocates, but frankly, we catch a lot of flak for trying to deal with a criminal activity, and we want to deal with the criminal activity while at the same time taking care of people who are unfortunate. So, I have, I don't have a problem with releasing the funds, but I'm sort of waiting to hear back from Deb and those organizations. Now, maybe Deborah, you've been approached by them while I was out of town?
I have a phone call with Debbie tomorrow.
Okay.
We were gonna kind of strategize.
Okay, so I mean, my preference would be, let's wait and hear, you know, have this phone call with Debbie, see if she still feels the same way based on the discussion I had, and if everything's on track, then I'm completely in favor of releasing the funds. But if that's not quite where they ended up after she met with the other two, then I, then I still have reservations about releasing those funds.
And I guess I was under the impression that the assurance that was needed was going to be that meeting and the, that you had with those organizations, was that they didn't have to come back to council. But I just feel like we're withholding funds from some of our most needy population. Those organizations all serve low-income residents, they help people that are facing, you know, trying to prevent from going into homelessness, they help them, you know, have food on the table. And I, I think the homelessness issue is a broader conversation. We need to talk about law enforcement, and we can set policies on different aspects of that, but withholding monies that are going to helping people that really need it. Just, I would request that we release those grant funds, but if council's not ready to do that, then I guess we'll have to wait.
Deborah, do you recall the amount of the grants for each of the three entities?
Not off the top of my head, but I think around like 2,000.
Yeah.
They were not very large.
2,000 each?
I, but that's just off the top of my head, I could be totally wrong.
I thought they were more than that.
That's my recollection, but--
Yeah.
I don't think anybody remembers.
No one knows.
Just so you know, the meeting is not broadcasting on Channel 10 because of the fiber cut that happened.
Oh, where did that happen?
Remember when all the--
The one up valley?
Yeah, the one that had, yeah, that took out the run for internet. I think it's still, there's still some issues, so--
I see.
I have grants here.
They should get notices from people.
I wore my nice shirt.
Catholic Charities is 10,000, Lift Up 7,000, Salvation Army 9,000. And I would just put out there that that can buy a lot of food.
Yeah. I guess I'm just wondering, you know, I'd be, I'd be willing to go with whatever the will rest of the council is as a potential compromise. Perhaps we agree to release say 2,500 to each of them, which would perhaps get them by until the next meeting, and see if we could get them to come to the next meeting. Does that sound like a reasonable compromise?
I'd like them to come to the next meeting and speak to the public as to, just to make sure everyone's heard this, you guys have had some conversations behind the scenes, because this is, it's a serious issue, as our guest has pointed out, and until this town gets serious about it, it's going to continue to be an issue and it's going to get worse. And if we're part of the problem, then, you know, then that's, then that's an issue for us.
I would say that when I met with them, a lot of my concerns were allayed, I guess, in that, you know, I was concerned that they were promoting the undesirable element of the homeless population, and I don't think that is the case. Is there perhaps occasionally is that happening? But yeah, you know, I don't think it's the rule, and certainly not their intent, and they are very aware of the concerns, both to businesses and, you know, the potential wildfire hazard that could happen if one of these camps starts a fire that burns down the hillside. And so, you know, I do think that there's been some, you know, misunderstanding, at least on my part, as to what services they provided and how they, how they deal with those people. Jonathan?
Chief Wilson, your staff cleans up and deals with a lot of these homeless encampments. When you do, where do these people say they're getting their sleeping bags, their tents, their cookstoves? Do they say, don't worry, I'll just go to so-and-so and get more? And what is that organization or organizations?
Those would basically be the organizations you just named.
I don't think Lift Up--
They don't give out sleeping bags.
Lift Up or Catholic Charities or Salvation Army don't give out sleeping bags, according to them. I think Feed My Sheep does, is my understanding.
Well, not to get into the he said, she said, I'm just asking--
At times, and I've been told that it's coming from other of those sources as well.
I was assured that they don't, now, someone is obviously mistaken there, so--
I've changed work.
Yeah, so--
Well, I think that gets to Todd's point of, let's have them come as they promised me they would, and publicly make assurances to us as to what they're doing and not doing. I mean, I'm willing, Mike, to support the compromise measure to fund them in the short term until they can do that, so I mean, I would vote for that, but I wouldn't release the whole thing until we've had this public discussion and assurances, including asking very directly this question.
About shovels issue.
And I think, just for mayor, sometimes too, there can be a point of confusion on that sometimes with that, because of the fact that so many of the service providers aren't in the same building now. So, I think that can be a little difficult too.
Okay.
You know, just to give that as a, an issue that they may have as well.
All right. So, let's, well, I guess we have more people who would like to say something. Mr. Davis?
Well, I was just going to say that I would agree with that compromise. I also was under the impression when we had this discussion in July, that we would actually see these agencies come before us. I didn't know there would be side meetings going on that we all weren't necessarily privy to that conversation, so I think it's important that they come before the public. I think it's important that the public understands that we're serious about this and that we have had quite a few conversations and meetings about it. I get accused all the time, and got accused at lunch today, that we sit up here and do nothing about it. You know, that's now becoming quite a hangout under this new bridge we just built. There was a number of people, you know, with backpacks and smoking cigarettes and turning our underbridge into the smoke hole, and then I was, we were, I was accused of, like, we're just ignoring it. So, I think it's important we talk about it.
I would agree. Rick?
Yeah, just two quick points. Number one, winter is coming.
Solve things for four or five months.
Yeah, four or five months, kick the can down the road. And the second is that, you know, I'm not even sure these organizations by themselves can take care of the homeless problem in Glenwood Springs. I mean, I think that it would take a coordinated sort of approach, it would take, you know, maybe some knowledge and, you know, some different behaviors even from all of us that we don't currently engage in. And I don't think there's such a thing as free lunch, but I think that there are some things that, you know, that we could look at. And I'd encourage us to reach out to people who really know what they're doing, and maybe instead of blaming the victim here, looking at, you know, what are some proactive things that can be done? The Colorado Coalition for the Homeless, you know, works with a number of municipalities in terms of creating, you know, that awareness. And I think that we've created this awareness, by the way, so I'm not, you know, I'm not arguing that this wasn't a bad process to go through. I think message given, message delivered. But again, I think the problem is bigger than these organizations, it's bigger than all of us. And I think coming together in some way and kind of clarifying where we're at as a city would be really important. Is that going to stop people from smoking under the bridge? Probably not. Is that going to stop people from using our new and beautiful Two Rivers Park? Probably not. And so, you know, there's some things I think that you can move forward on and some things that you can't, but I think that, you know, affixing blame to one or two organizations is not going to get us where we need to go.
Um, not to beat the drum of our grants process sucks, but our grants process sucks, and I think this is the byproduct of it. You know, our grant committee, the three people that serve on it, recommended that we fund these organizations. We did not give them any guidance on what our priorities were, so I think we failed as a council in that manner. And if we're going to give this to a grants committee, this discretionary funding, then you live by the sword or you die by the sword, and I think we should release those funds in conjunction with the recommendation of the grants committee. Otherwise, we need to reopen all those grants and start picking and choosing which ones we like and which ones we don't. And that's the whole reason we have it. Now, that being said, I'm fine with the compromise.
So guys, remember, we're still on council comments. I don't even think this is an agenda item that we can make a decision on, because it wasn't noticed that we were going to be having a full-blown discussion about this, but--
That's a good point.
I think based on how the motion was worded, I went back and listened to it, you know, it didn't, didn't appear to call for me that it has to come back for a vote by council. We could give direction on it. It would be my interpretation, just the way it was worded.
I just want a clearer direction before I release funding.
Okay.
Do you have any thoughts? Does this need to be a notice discussion?
I don't think it needs to, I don't know that it needs to be a notice discussion based on the way the motion was originally worded. What I do see from council right now is that it's an issue that you guys aren't comfortable moving forward on right now, and so I suggest that probably the compromise you proposed is the place to go, or we need to bring it back for a formal vote, just get it done. One way or the other.
Mr. Davis?
The only thing I have to say after Rick's comments is that I don't think we're blaming any one or two organizations for the bigger issue here. You know, that whole conversation came up simply because we know that historically some of these organizations have provided tents and sleeping bags and supplies for people camping on our hillsides, and we wanted to make sure that we weren't funding that. And that's, as I recall, that July conversation. Certainly not, those are great organizations, and they do great things, and it's important in this community, but we want to make sure that our public dollars are not building campsites on the hillside.
Right. And I'm going to, Carl, if you don't mind, I'm going to put you on the spot, just because of the topic. For the benefit of Mr. Spangler and anyone else who is inclined to listen to this, could you provide a brief rundown of how our hands are effectively tied to a large extent in dealing with the homeless issue?
There is, there has been a series of recent cases, oh, sorry. Thank you. There has been a series of recent cases over the last three or four years related to both speech and issues directly related to the homeless population all across the United States. And as we know, it's a, it's an increasing problem at a level that we probably haven't seen since frankly, the Great Depression, at least the descriptions that my folks gave of that time period. So, those decisions relate to things like panhandling and prohibitions against them that is, has been declared to be a free speech right, as long as you're not doing it in a manner that is aggressive, overly aggressive, that becomes harassment or threatening. When we start talking about most recently, the idea of public spaces, and a comment was made earlier, I think, I can't remember by who, about, you know, just move them along or push them at it or whatever, that you can't not provide public space that people can rest in, right? It's publicly owned space, and the ruling of the court, the Ninth Circuit, was that you can't ban them from having someplace to go if they have no place else to go in terms of public space. You know, the things that we have done that are tough, because as you know, we are always short on fully staffing the police department, that is a huge struggle, and we talk about that every budget cycle, about how do we recruit and retain by enforcing things like there is a-- recruit and retain by enforcing things like there is a smoking ban in the downtown area. And I think our guys do their best, but it's also very hard. If you've ever done a ride-along with them on a 12-hour shift, you get a real sense of how hard it is with the number of officers we have to make that the priority and to be away from your car and not backing up somebody else who's handling a DUI or a domestic or things like that. And certainly, the chief could speak more clearly to that. So, there is, there's some real limitations. Right now, about 23 communities, I want to say in Colorado, are facing lawsuits over various iterations of panhandling and vagrancy ordinances. So, we're going to see how that shakes out in the state courts and the federal courts as far as Colorado law goes. But frankly, right now, I mean, we are, I think what the courts are making pretty clear is that this is not an area where they view it as something that is as simple to solve as a legal issue that it, you know, the boundaries that are putting on it are making it where you guys are at tonight, talking about how do you deal with the social issue? I don't know if that is exactly what you needed, but.
I just, you know.
You know, there are, the bottom line is, we're doing pretty much everything we can, with the exception of probably if we had more manpower, and I'm speaking for Terry, if we had more manpower to do more foot patrols in downtown and say enforce the smoking ban. We can't prohibit them on the street corners from panhandling. We can't prohibit them, homeless or professional solicitors or anybody else, from walking up to you when you're in a public space and asking you for money. We can't prohibit that. So, it does limit us in what we can do.
Yeah, thanks. I would just like to assure Mr. Spangler that I appreciate your concerns about that. I share them. We've been talking about this issue. I've been on council now for seven years, seven months and some days, and I've probably been talking about it pretty much that whole time, trying to figure out how to solve the problem. And it's a big challenge. And we're, you know, because of these judicial rulings, we, there's a lot of things we can't do. Jim?
Yeah, I would just, I think what Carl says is right. It's not illegal to be homeless. It's not illegal to ask people relatively politely for money. Maybe to give Mr. Spangler some assurance. So, there are things that are illegal that we can do. I mean, it is illegal to light campfires up on the hill. It's illegal to camp in some places. It's illegal to urinate and defecate in the streets. It's illegal. I mean, there are a lot of things that are clearly illegal that, it's not the fact that the person is homeless who is doing it, it's that they are committing illegal acts that are dangerous to the property and lies of our citizens. And those can be enforced. So, our hands are tied, as you've pointed out, Carl, but they're not tied from dealing with the illegal activity, which is really at the source of most of the problems we're talking about and that bother us. And so, I know we'll talk later about budgets and things like that. A lot of it comes back to, do we have the resources, the police resources, to enforce our laws? And that's a struggle, but I might suggest that we focus a little more attention on that than on some of these things that we really can't do anything about and just make sure we have the resources to enforce our laws. That's all. Thanks.
All right. Chief?
And just to clarify and make a couple of points, if you will, Ms. Cowan. I agree. And one thing that we have gotten to, that's gotten too easy for us, is to kind of classify homeless or transient or hobo or bums or whatever. And there are way more demographics than that underneath that one umbrella. And the folks that you're talking about, that these same organizations are serving that are underemployed, underhoused, in need, et cetera, et cetera, the difference is, they're not my customers.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, and there's the difficulty is that these organizations, that are all good organizations with wonderful intent and a huge well of compassion, kind of end up helping both, my customers and the folks that you're talking about. At the midpoint of this year, we went through our statistics and found that 67% of our criminal arrests at the point of the end of June this year were people that declared themselves as being homeless, camping, living on the hills, et cetera. 67%. That's a huge resource drain. We had that done so that we could tell people that it's not that we're not doing anything. We're doing as much as we can. We're doing it under the advice of counsel, legal counsel, not city council, and doing it the best that we can, employing the laws to the best and fairest method that we can. One of the problems becomes is that what recourse do the courts have? I can show you folks that we've arrested 15 times this year. We'll arrest them another 15 before the end of the year. There really isn't anything that the court system can do to them to discourage their behaviors because they don't care. We can fine them. Court levies a fine and they say, "Sure, I'm not going to pay it." Then a warrant's issued and we put them in jail. And they spend two days and they get a shower and some food and then they're released. And then they don't pay their fine and we deal with them again and arrest them again and arrest them on another warrant. So, that's part of the problem is that it's such a complex issue. It is a societal issue, not an enforcement issue. I don't believe we will ever be the tool that is going to have a significant impact on it. We can take a little off the edges and we can deal with some of the behaviors, but we're not going to change the landscape through the employment of law enforcement in the courts because we don't have the right tools to change those long-term behaviors. So, that was all I had to say.
Thanks, Steve. Good insight.
I did just want to let you know that the three organizations you're talking about did help me significantly with outreach to their customers or clients about fire danger this year. You know, they took our flyers, they, you know, they did outreach. They were very helpful. I've started having longer-term conversations with them about how we can get to some of the harder issues that our police department can't. I don't know what that looks like, but we're talking to them and it's one of the first times I think we've had a serious conversation with them about other solutions. And, what was I saying? I lost the third thing I was going to say. But, you know, I think we can make progress and I think, you know, they're good organizations that we can work with. That being said, yes, I think before I release funding other than $2,500, I would like a vote.
Okay.
And just to say also, I'm not opposed to telling these organizations, "You can't take money from the city and buy sleeping bags, camping equipment, Coleman stoves and thermares," you know? And I think that that's a legitimate thing to ask. Whether we can enforce that or not is another matter. But, you know, in terms of your question, Steve, about the stewardship of public money, I have no problems in making that a condition of any money that goes forward, so.
I'd just like, like to reiterate that the one thing that I came to ask today was the releasing of these grants to these organizations. And we've gotten into this broader homelessness issue, but that's a small fraction of the people that they serve. There are a lot of people in our community that are at or below the poverty level that need help with the basic necessities. Salvation Army, who we're withholding their grant from, was very instrumental in help for the Lake Christine fire victims in the valley, setting up shelters for those people that were evacuated, providing food for firefighters and for those families. They serve a lot of need in our community and we're wrapping it up and holding these funds kind of hostage to this homelessness issue, which, if you remember at the beginning of this year, we asked to have a broader community conversation to start working on the homelessness issue. This council didn't want to go there. So, I think if we're going to go there, let's do it and embrace it and get all these partners involved. And there are a lot of different stakeholders in this issue, but to hold these, I just object to holding these funds hostage over a much broader issue when I feel like they have a mission in the community that we should support. So, that's it.
Thanks, Shelley. So, do we need to do a motion on this, just to release the $2,500? All right, I would entertain a motion on this matter.
So, I'll move that we, to the three organizations for whom we withheld the grants, that we immediately award each of those $2,500 and that we ask those organizations to, as soon as it fits into our agenda, to appear at a public meeting to counsel before we release the balance of the funds.
Second?
All right, we have a motion by Jim and a second by Todd to release $2,500 to each of the three organizations from whom we previously withheld discretionary grants and to ask that those organizations come before us to discuss their programs and give us reassurances that our funds are not being spent to create more problems in our community before we release further funds. Is that a fair restatement of your motion?
Yes.
All right, any further questions or comments? Let's go ahead and call for a question.
Incahuam yes, Goja yes, Davis yes, Gamba yes, Lehi yes, Vori yes, Karp yes. Motion passed, adjourned.
All right. Any further council comments?
Yeah.
It's on your record.
I have one. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, just.
Please, you go.
There's a, sort of a vacation rental thing that's already in the council comments. I didn't know if that was something.
That's what I think Jonathan wanted to talk about.
Yeah, but if anybody else has any other comments besides me, then jump in.
Because you're going to go first.
I'm going to go last, take some time.
My only comment was going to be on vacation rentals, so.
Okay.
You lead it off and then I'll comment on what you say.
So, I just want to be clear what I'm asking tonight. I'll just get that and, you know, spoil the surprise, but I'm going to be asking for staff to bring back a ordinance for one-year moratorium on any additional, new, additional vacation rental permits. I want to tell you why I'm going to be doing that and asking for council support. We have a, recently in my neighborhood, we got a new vacation rental. And this used to be a house where there was people in it that my family knew. I used to walk with them to school many times a week. I got to know their kids, they got to know me. We became friends. And then they moved and then that house became a vacation rental. And about a month and a half ago, maybe it's two months now, there is a tough mud race in Snow, Mass. And by the way, Glenwood really needs to do that because those things are awesome. Brought a ton of people to the area. And, you know, getting mail one evening on that Saturday about 6:00, 7:00 o'clock, you know, to quote my friend, the Beastie Boys, "The base was a thumping and the party was hot" because there was eight cars and there was people out in front. They were, you know, they were treating it like they were on vacation. And, you know, that's okay. You know, people can have fun in my neighborhood. Usually, I'm the one that people are complaining about. But a couple of days later, my other neighbor tells me this funny story about how her son ordered something online. He's a third grader, mind you. He ordered something online and got it delivered, went to check the mail so he could intercept it because he packed into his mom's account. He got busted by his mom and he said, "Oh, it came from my aunt and uncle." And she said, "Well, what do you mean?" He said, "Well, there's a note, but I left it at my friend's house." So, he actually went to this vacation rental, found the person that was staying there. The person who was staying there wrote him a note, forged a note saying, "Here's the present from Aunt and Uncle so-and-so." And that's hilarious because, I mean, the kid is diabolical and he's in third grade, but it's, it's serious because that mom doesn't know who that person is. And she has no good, bad, indifferent. I know we can't background check all our neighbors, but she can't say, "Stay away from that house" or "I don't feel comfortable with that house" or "Knock yourself out." You know, this is in a cul-de-sac in my neighborhood. I used to send my kids there to go play with their friends because it's a cul-de-sac park. And so, you know, that is something that we are on pace now through nearly 10 months, well, nine months, over nine months of the year, that we are getting more than one vacation rental unit come online a week. I know we had this conversation like eight months ago and I think that, yeah, we're not at Wreckin' Ridge where there's 3,000. We're not at the point where we're crested butte, either from a community standpoint or a vacation rental standpoint. But I don't want a year from now, after the new council is seated and really has time to digest this and have staff research it and have community feedback and community comment, I don't want another 52. I don't want another 52 houses that used to be my neighbors. I don't want another 52 units that used to be workforce housing, gone. I'm not proposing, and let me clear, I'm not proposing any action of, "Let's solve this problem tonight." Not like we just solved the homeless thing. So, awesome. I don't want to get into that, but, and I think the question of why a year, because that sounds kind of a long time to fix this problem. You know, just kind of writing down off the top of my head, we've got a lot of stuff going on right now. 27th Street, 7th Street, Two Rivers, the landfills, source, source trash potential, the street tax potential, fire tax hopefully, potentially accommodation tax, ERP. And that's not even including just running a city. So, I think our ability to take one more, and obviously the homeless issue is something that we haven't even, you know, obviously, that's an issue we have to talk about, that I think even takes precedence over this. But much like the loss of riparian land is, I think, an urgent thing that, you know, felt in this morning's work session that we needed to address, I just don't want next month for 10 more of these things to come online without there being a robust community conversation. And again, I didn't get to the point of where I said, "Why a year?" I think anything that's going to take, any effort that we take to really address this is going to take four or five months. And, you know, honestly, I kind of now know a little bit where folks stand on this thing and it's probably going to be a 4-3, 3-4, a 5-2 contentious issue. It's going to be a contentious community issue. And we're going to have a different council from two to four members by April. And I don't know that I want to waste a ton of time really digging in and fighting battles with you all to just have the next council overturn everything we just did. So, I would like to do a year so that the new council that's seated, whoever it is, whether it's two members or four new members, is able to get their feet under, can really, can get on from the ground floor and do this. And we can really tackle this in a thoughtful way. Because right now, we're not doing anything. It's just, it's happening to us and it's going to continue to happen to us regardless of what we do because it's happening in the county regardless. And we don't get that sales tax or that accommodation tax. So, this is a small thing that we can do. I don't think it shuts down the vacation rental industry in our town. It doesn't even shut down the expansion of the short-term rental opportunities in the 81601. It's just something that we can do right now that will allow for three or four more of my neighbors not to turn into a frat house or sorority house.
Great.
And so, that is, you know, I know we're going to take public comment and that's my comment, that's why I put it out there. I don't know if we all want to comment on it before we take public comment, but I don't know, Mr. Mayor, would you?
Anyone that, any of the council that wants to comment, go ahead, but Jim, you're next.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. It's interesting. I saw this item and I read through it and my reaction and the comments I was going to make are really identical to yours, which is a little scary, I guess. But, you know, I saw the increase in the number and it's really a hockey stick that's happening in terms of the VRBOs and the others. And I know we've intended, the last time we talked about this, to revisit this and kind of down the road after some studies came in. But when I saw the numbers and the hockey stick effect, I thought, by the time we get around to it, the horse is going to be out of the barn potentially. And so, my thought, what I'd intended to share tonight was also to ask for a moratorium of some period of time that gives us time to see what other communities have done, what's worked, what hasn't worked. And maybe more importantly, find out what do our citizens believe? You know, when we had this, we discussed this topic, you know, four or five months ago, and, you know, we probably had seven or eight people and it was kind of split down the middle. We had the folks that were, you know, "This is my home, this is my property, let's let the market decide." And I'm sympathetic to that in many respects. And I'm also leery, my experience in life is when government gets involved in housing, it tends to screw it up. So, you know, I'm sympathetic, but on the other hand. hand, the other half of the people had concerns like you've expressed. And I have had, over the last, let's say, two or three weeks, probably three or four phone calls or emails with stories very similar to the one you told. And so with all that in mind, I thought, you know, we need to slow this down. I agree with the moratorium and then make sure we have time to address it properly. So I'm supportive of what you proposed.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jim. Rick?
You know, I think this is an issue that could get away from us. When we first started talking about that, the numbers were a little bit lower than what we see now. And, you know, if you do fit a trend line to that, it's easy to see how this would really make a dent in sort of quality of life in neighborhoods, but also really lock out a number of people who are looking for affordable housing. And, you know, we recently permitted a couple of major apartment complexes here in town that were our so-called attainable housing that are now advertising themselves as luxury housing. And, you know, that's quite a hundred-yard difference between, you know, what we thought we were approving and the market that evidently these folks are looking at. And so we don't even know within that complexion, and I don't mean to be picking on, you know, the council or any past decisions or, you know, even the people that are doing that. I mean, God bless them. I mean, I'm glad to see that we're getting more inventory within town. But what we don't know within that group of individuals or the apartments that are coming up, whether, how many of those will be short-term vacation rentals? I mean, we don't, we don't have a guideline for it. We don't have an idea of exactly where we want to be within the next little while. And I'm certainly, you know, very respectful of individuals' rights and the property that they brought, but, but. But on the other hand, we do tell people quite a bit in terms of our zoning, what you can do and what you can't do. And this may be time to sort of hit the pause button and really have those sorts of conversations. You look at Durango, which is a similar town, about twice as big as us. They have 93 units that are out there right now. And so for every 200 citizens, they have a VBRO. Glenwood, for every about 113 citizens, we have a VBRO, is the current stats that we see here. So, you know, I realize it's a complex issue. We haven't had the dialogue with the people who own hotels, you know, to see what they think of all of this. And that certainly would seem to cut into some of their business as well. And everybody I've talked to is reasonable about this, but on the other hand, they're wondering, should there be a limit? Should we look at a limit? Should we have that conversation? I don't know what that limit is. And so, no, I would certainly support a moratorium in short-term vacation rentals until such time that we can have that full discussion about affordable housing versus attainable housing. I know that we're waiting for data, and I think that we ought to be looking at data, but I think that if we wait too long for that magic silver bullet, we'll never have the meaningful sort of discussion about what we want Glenwood to look like in five years. It's possible, for instance, that the whole north side of the river that we're talking about could be all VBROs within a period of time here. And is that what we want? You know, I'm not sure. So, thank you.
I just want to address a few of your comments, and then Shelley, I'll let you speak. The two apartment projects that are under construction right now never committed to any price point on their product. So there's no misrepresentation by them in terms of what those products are. They were free-market products and they can try to get what they can. I anticipate they're not going to be able to get the rents that they're hoping to get because when you build 300 apartments, there's going to be an effect on, you know, that big increase in supply is going to have an effect on demand, and they may not be able to rent them for what they're hoping to. But there was no mischaracterization or misrepresentation by those projects as to what their projects were. They're always free-market. They're always going to rent them for whatever they could rent them for. The other argument, or the other point that you made is that they may go all vacation rental. I can't remember the exact statistic or the exact code, but what, how many units in an apartment building, Jen, could become a VRB, or become a vacation rental?
25%, but at least one. So if you had a smaller unit, that it could be at least one.
So up to 25% of them could become a vacation rental? Okay. So it wouldn't be the whole buildings under any circumstance then. Shelley?
And I'll keep it short on this, but I think a moratorium could be a good idea because I do think we need to think about what type of regulations, if any, we want to put on vacation rentals. It affects our housing. More than that, I think it affects the character of our neighborhoods. And Glenwood Springs is a town where I know many of you out there, you, you know, you move here, you stay for a long time, you raise your families, they go to schools, you have small businesses. It's been the type of community that you can live in and work in and raise a family. I was recently at a housing work session conference for the Mountain Rural Housing Association. And we were in there with towns like Edwards and Vale and Tally Ride and even Salida. And some of them have this issue, I think, because they're more of a resort community, but they're also closer to the front range, where up to 40% of their housing stock is investment-owned, short-term rentals. And they, they've lost their town character. They struggle with that, and they struggle even more than we do with affordable housing because that means 40% of your housing stock is not part of your housing stock. It's basically part of your hotel stock. So I think we need to get a handle on this, and I would support a short-term moratorium so we can figure out what type of community we want to be.
Okay. I think there was some discussion prior to the meeting that we would allow public comment on this. And so at this point, I would, if anyone in the public would like to speak on this matter, please come up to the podium, give us your name and address, if you would.
Hi, councilpeople and Mr. Mayor. I'm Chris Clark. I live downtown Glenwood, 11th and Blake. I think Todd is my word. I actually want to be careful what I say because I like what I'm hearing right now. We live right next door to a house that sold in May for a silly amount of money. Great neighbors. We lament them moving to Newcastle after retiring. And they sold to a couple in Denver who promptly turned it into a VRBO. And I want to make sure I keep my, my words straight. See, I made some notes here. You know, what we were hoping, my wife and I got married a couple of years ago, bought a house downtown about four years ago. And I love downtown. The character of it just is exciting to me. We're, my wife and I at some point are going to be raising kids. I want to know who my neighbors are. I want to know these kids that my kids are hanging out with, or, excuse me, I want my kids to be able to know the people that they're hanging out with. We actually built a deck on the front of our house because it seems like a trend in America is to build decks in the back to try to keep away from the community. And we were against that. We wanted to be able to face the community. We wanted to be able to talk to people walking down the streets. And we, our deck is close enough to the sidewalk that we can literally wave at people as they walk by and give them a nod as they walk by. And, you know, maybe they'll comment on how green our grass is or something, which makes us feel great. I was across the street playing football with my rental neighbor across the street, his kid. I love football. And they're running patterns out in the driveway. I went over there and played defense because I can totally see myself doing this with my boy at one point in my life. And I can know neighbors that are renters. I can know neighbors that are owners. And the people that started moving in next door are now competing for our parking spots, leaving lights in the house that are shining directly into our house late at night. During the summer months, pot is wafting into our open windows. We don't have AC in our home, so we leave our windows open to get the cool air. And we're here in the party and going on. And I completely get vacation. When I'm on vacation, I want to stay up as late as I want to stay up. Every night is, every night is a weekend when you're on vacation. And we live next door to it on a regular basis. We intentionally connected with our neighbors when we found out they bought their house because they told us they were going to be there on the weekends from Denver. And they misled us. And they've been there maybe four times. And it's really, really frustrating that, you know, they can, you know, buy a house over in the front range and then make an investment, and then we're the ones that pay. You know what I'm saying? It's, they're the people that benefit, and everybody else in the neighborhood pays because of the strangers that are coming through. My perspective on this is, it has changed. I don't think that, at one time, I thought that maybe I would do the same thing if we decided to move into a different house. But I have to say that if Glenwood doesn't do something, I'll go and find my community in a different community. I'll go to a neighboring community, and then I'll leave my home here and do the same thing. Because what else, I mean, why wouldn't I? The amount of money that you can make with that. And I love the idea of us getting ahead of this before it gets out of hand, the hockey stick that Mr. Ingram was talking about. I would love for us to be able to get ahead of that and have an intelligent approach to how we can talk to these people. And so, or, excuse me, how we can talk to future homeowners that are buying houses in our communities. I don't want our character to change anymore. And I don't have, I'm very conservative, and I get, I don't want government, like, getting into stuff. But we have zoning for that reason, too, because we want to keep the character of our neighborhoods. And I see this as one of those things that could drastically change the character of Glenwood Springs. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this item?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Christian Henny, 526 Pine Street. I think you've made a couple of valid discussion points tonight that really need to be flushed out. First is the quality of life for neighborhoods. Glenwood is a community, and if we become like some of these other mountain towns that are the 40% rentals, we lose our sense of community. So that would be first. The second I would say is, we have a problem in this town, and even goes to the police department, of getting people to work here and be able to afford cost of living. And this is just accelerating that problem by removing inventory that could be rentals. So I, I'm not even going to get into the revenue side on against hotels. I don't really worry about that. But I'm, it's making it harder for me to attract talent. It's, and I think quality of life is what this town is supposed to be about and needs to be about. So I just ask that you think about that. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this item? All right. Seeing none. We're, this isn't, and this, we're still in council comments, so this isn't an official agenda item, but...
Could be a lot.
It sounds like it's something we want to bring back for future discussions.
Yeah. So I want to make a couple of clarifications and then also provide you with a sense of urgency for a different reason. The clarification is, I assume you mean this applies to whether you're renting a whole house or a room in your house?
I would like to make that distinction. The accessory tourist rental would be exempt from this. An accessory tourist rental is renting a room out because I think that that can expand. So that, unless somebody else has a problem with that, I would...
Does it have to be owner occupied, an accessory rental, or it has to have someone living?
I think that there has to be an onsite manager, a long-term onsite manager. Gretchen's telling me that that's right.
I mean, I think there's scenario, I think most of the time, somebody owns their house and wants to rent out a room for extra income, which gives more opportunity for people to live in the community. I would bet maybe sometimes people rent a house and then potentially rent out rooms or sub-rent rooms in this manner. So I don't see that as a huge problem. I don't know. Gretchen, can you speak to the 13 that we're talking about? There's only been four. Well, there's been nine in 2018 and four in 2017.
Can I suggest something real quick since we're in council comments again? Let's not solve the issue tonight. We're going to have to have another night on this. So are we going to solve it tonight? Do I spend an hour on this? Because I got a lot to say. I'm not saying it because I know I'm going to have another chance.
No, absolutely. And so, all I was trying to get is, I get the sense that you would like, that probably the bulk of the council would like to at least look at a moratorium ordinance at the next council meeting. And so I'm just trying to flesh out what I'm going to include in that. And I will just do it as an ad alternate.
Fine.
Excuse me. The other, a small sense of urgency is, there's an election coming up on November 6th. If Amendment 74 passes, I think it is important, one, that you have adopted this moratorium ordinance ahead of that. And so we'll probably style it as an emergency ordinance. Although, two, if Amendment 74 passes, I'm not sure that you will have an opportunity to change your regulation because it will have an impact. And one of the potential effects of Amendment 74 is that it kind of sets regulation as it is today. And I think my argument would be, we haven't done anything new, so there wouldn't be any compensation owed to anybody. But as soon as we adopt a new regulation, we'll have to deal with that. So...
And so my, I guess, urgency with Amendment 74 being a potential would be that it be an emergency ordinance to get ahead of that. Because if we never have another short-term rental after this because of Amendment 74, I think that sucks is that deprives us of the right to actually regulate this. But I think the alternate of never being able to put any regulation on it is a far worse outcome.
Yeah. And that's what I was saying, is that I would style it as, we have two meetings before the 6th, so we can get that done. I'm just saying that that's, this is a classic example of why that amendment may be problematic for us.
We do have two meetings before the 6th?
We do today, but it's...
What's our date of our first meeting in?
The first of November is our first meeting.
First of November?
Yeah.
Got to love this kind of governance, though, yeah.
Well, I mean, just to be clear, I requested this be put on the agenda. I did not request this be put on council comments. So that was a mistake, miscommunication between Debra and I. So...
It's always a good place to have it in council comments.
In any case, I will bring a draft back so that we can move on to the regular agenda.
Thank you, Carl.
But is that draft including, sorry, some exceptions to the...
I'm going to, I'm going to have some check-the-box language, so...
Because I just wouldn't have to say, and since everybody else has had comment here and I've made none, and I'll keep it short because it's, I thought I'd be out of here by 7:30 tonight. I'm not going to say that's not going to happen. But if you're going to make exceptions to it, I think the other exception is probably in the GID, which is not a, really, you know, in these downtown buildings is not a neighborhood at all.
I think we should discuss that.
Yeah, I'll play... I was going to say, I'll bring some language back. You guys can tinker with it. We'll just see where it goes.
If I would have known I could govern by ambush like this, I would have been doing this all along. This is terrible, just so you know. I mean, it's just a terrible way to do this. Council comments, this is not the place to be doing this. This should have been noticed as to what we were going to do tonight so that we could have more, more comments from the public, which we've had many, many times with VRBOs. And now all of a sudden, here we are in council comments going down this path. I don't really, I don't really care the path we go down as a council. I mean, it is what it is. You know, whatever the vote is, is what it is. I'm okay with that, actually. But there's a lot of other ways to do this. And this is just, this is about as wrong as I've seen in seven plus years.
If I, if I may, just let me explain what happened. Is I got a request, I think, late last week?
Yes.
To get it on. There were two council members asking for it. So I determined we should put it on council comments.
I didn't say anything about a moratorium anywhere.
I didn't know, it wasn't, I didn't know the topic fully. But I was requested to put vacation rentals on.
The public should know the topic before we talk for 40 minutes about it.
But if it's on a regular item agenda at our next meeting, then there will be full public comment and discussion at that time. I mean, we're not doing it tonight.
Yeah. The intention was to get it on so you guys could determine what you wanted to do with it at the next council meeting.
All right. Any further council comments? Please say no.
No.
All right.
No, thank you.
I'm going to let everyone know that there are two changes to our agenda today. Item 13C, which is... Item thirteen C, which is Resolution two thousand eighteen dash forty-four, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Glanwood Springs, Colorado, opposing Amendment seventy-four, has been pulled from the consent agenda and it will be considered separately. And item fifteen, which is the Historical Society Annual Report, um, has been moved to our next regular agenda, which would be on, uh, October, what is it, eighteenth? Um, all right. At this point, uh, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of the following. Item A, Urban Renewal Legal Services. Item B, Letter of Support for Roaring Forks School District's Grant Application to Colorado's Safe Routes to School. Item D, Ordinance Number Twenty-Two Series of two thousand eighteen and Ordinance of the City of Glanwood Springs, Colorado, Amending the Powers and Administration of the Glanwood Springs Downtown Development Authority. This is the second reading on that ordinance. And item E, Amendment to Meadows Tax Incentive Agreement. Is there, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I saw, move, or second?
A motion by Rick and a second by Shelley to approve the consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Uh, item thirteen C, Resolution two thousand eighteen dash forty-four, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Glanwood Springs, Colorado, opposing Amendment seventy-four.
There you go.
If you want to, that'd be great.
You know, I requested this morning that that be pulled off and we had some discussion about that and it was kind of based on, uh, the other conversation we had in work session this morning, um, that I thought by some chance we would pass this repair in at some point setback which would greatly affect property values and how the government can come in and do something maybe years or decades after you purchased a piece of property that would make that piece of property maybe not completely worthless, but would reduce its value tremendously. I think, um, created what I thought was some need for some discussion about that. Uh, I'd like to rescind my request for that discussion at this point, not because we've had quite a bit of discussion here tonight. I think that if you look in the agenda, the, uh, the, uh, letter, um, supporting that, um, from this council is compelling as well as, as your comments in your resolution, so I, I'll support that. As you...
All right. Is there any further comments on this resolution? All right, seeing none, I'll open up to the public. Is anyone from, would anyone from the public like to comment on Resolution two thousand eighteen dash forty-four, Resolution, City Council of the City of Glanwood Springs, Colorado, opposing Amendment seventy-four? Not familiar with Amendment seventy-four, um, are you willing to give a very brief summation of it or do you want me to try to take a, take a hat at it?
Sure.
Um, Amendment seventy-four adds eleven, eleven words to, I believe it's Article fifteen of the Constitution regarding takings, um, by a, a government entity and adds the, essentially the words that any, any government action that reduces property value is compensable. Um, it, the, the difficulty with that is that historic jurisprudence regarding takings was, um, it, it left the door open to do things like adopt a new land use code without having to pay every resident in town for the change that may or may not occur to their property values. These kind of regulations of general applicability. And then beyond that, underneath current jurisprudence, you could do a site-specific analysis of if the regulation did in fact result in, in a taking of, um, the economic value of your property. By adding those words, what we have seen in similar instances in other states, Washington and Oregon in particular, is that it became a tool primarily of corporate America to really leverage both communities and the state government on a wide variety of regulations. Um, some are health and environment regulations, um, logging, you kind of, you name it. It, it wasn't really something that has panned out to help specific small property owners, frankly. Um, and so, um, the municipal league, as well as almost every municipality that I'm aware of, has been opposing Amendment seventy-four and it is not because they want to go out and take their citizens' property. It's that they want to be able to continue to provide services to their citizens rather than spending their budgets, um, on lawsuits and making payouts, there again, primarily to corporate America, um, for, you know, reasonable regulations in their own communities. And that's why I used the example of having this conversation, for better or for worse, about, um, vacation rentals. This would mean that somebody on one side of that or the other, this local government would wind up writing a check. Because I could make that argument and I could find an appraiser that would say, if you allow them, my property values went down, and if you don't allow them, my property values went down. And underneath Amendment seventy-four, you're in a no-win situation. So that's, that's the summary.
All right. So, given that, is there anyone who would like to comment on this item? All right, seeing none, I'll bring you back to council for motion.
Make a motion that we adopt Resolution forty-four, opposing Amendment seventy-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion by Shelley and a second by Jim, uh, to approve Resolution two thousand eighteen dash forty-four. Any further discussion? Let's call the question.
Ingram, yes. Goldish, yes. Davis, yes. Gambler, yes. Leahy, yes. Vohr, yes. Karp, yes. Motion passage to none.
All right. Next item. Uh, thank you for being patient. Uh, we're up to the Hanging Lake Contract. Do we have a presentation on this?
Well, I was going to briefly explain it. The Forest Service approached the city several months ago and after a long, extensive public process to determine how best to handle transit to and from Hanging Lake, we decided to try to work out a partnership together. And we were successful in that over the last couple of months. Essentially, um, we will be the, um, organization primarily responsible for transportation to and from Hanging Lake. We will be putting out an RFQ within the next two weeks to help us pick a vendor to help us with that. Um, I think it's important to point out that this is a partnership. It may be rough a little bit in the beginning. We're very excited, but you know, we think we'll learn through this process and we will work together with the Forest Service to try to continuously improve the Hanging Lake And I'd like to invite the Forest Service to come up and say something.
Good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. My name is Rick Stoke. I'm the Recreation and Land Staff Officer over here at the White River National Forest. Been around a long time. I was sitting back there thinking this is the third one of these transportation systems I will have worked on now in my career. Um, first of all, thank you so much for the support you've provided for us over the last several years. We couldn't have done the interim steps we've done out there without you. Um, we think that the partnership that Deb and, and Carl and others have been working on with us, um, it's a great step. It's going to be good for the, the folks who visit the national forest out there. It'll be good for the resources because we can finally get a handle on some of the overuse and, uh, some of the problems. And it'll be good for the city, um, mainly because under our rules, we would be opening it up to folks from Aspen and others to compete. And this way we can keep it locally to support the Glanwood community, which is primarily what Hanging Lake has been about this entire time. So with that, I am just here to answer questions, mainly, if you have any.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Stoke? Uh, we'd just like to say we also thank you guys for working with the City of Glenwood on this. We, we think, we understand that the first year or two might, there might be a big learning curve for both of us, but, uh, we anticipate that in the long run, this will be a win-win for, for both organizations, so...
Good, thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate your partnership, definitely, and we probably talk a lot more about it, but we've talked so much already tonight.
We have, yes. Couple of years now.
Yeah, thank you very much. Look forward to, uh, how the business model looks, uh, when we get this thing up and going, but thank you for your help.
Thank you.
And I'd just like to say too, I appreciate that the Forest Service has taken on putting a plan together for Hanging Lake because the feedback that I've heard is that, you know, there have been issues out there in the last couple of years with the parking and everything, so I think this will be good and help to preserve that area and happy the city's able to partner on that.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. Uh, at this point, I'll open up to anyone from the public who would like to comment on this item. All right, seeing none, I'll bring you back to council for discussion and/or a motion. Jim?
Yeah, the, um, I read to the, you know, entire contract and the exhibit with the requirements and, um, uh, there's, there's a lot there and a lot to do and, um, you know, I intend to vote that we move forward with this for sure. I guess my, my question, uh, for you, Debra, the timeframe is short. There are a lot of deadlines set forth in the, in the contract and they're, they're coming like a freight train at us. Do you feel, do, do we have somebody assigned kind of full-time to be managing this process or how do you, how do you feel about...
They're looking at her.
Um, no, I mean, we have a team. Steve is going to be really helpful. Um, you know, purchasing is already working on the RFQ. Brian is going to help. I mean, we are going to do the best we can. But no, there was no funding set aside to hire someone just for this. I think we're going to get the RFQ back, see what it looks like, and we're going to figure it out like we do everything else. But yeah, I'm lucky to have a really good senior management team that I abuse regularly.
Okay. Keep us, keep us posted on how it's going. Thank you.
Any other council comments? If, if not, I would entertain a motion to, uh, approve the, uh, agreement?
Make a motion, uh, move that we approve the, uh, uh, contract, uh, as, as the draft contract that's, uh, set forth in our materials.
Second.
A motion by Jim and a second by Jonathan to approve the contract, um, between the City of Glanwood Springs and the USDA Forest Service, White River National Forest, um, with respect to Hanging Lake. Uh, any further discussion or comments? Let's call the question.
Ingram, yes. Goldish, yes. Davis, yes. Gambler, yes. Leahy, yes. Vohr, yes. Karp, yes. Motion passage to none.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item is, uh, the Twenty-seventh Street Bridge Replacement Notice of Award.
Good evening. I have a very brief PowerPoint, if it'll load. So we recently sent the Twenty-seventh Street Bridge and Reconstruction and Roundabout Project out for bid. Uh, we followed our traditional bid process. We publicly advertised it as well as sent out mailers to, um, a number of companies. And we received input and responses from companies from across country, furthest being in the Midwest and, uh, Michigan. And at our mandatory pre-bid, we have thirty-three companies attend and we got four great bids returned. Um, it, over the last few weeks, we've evaluated the bids alongside CDOT. CDOT has recently, um, approved us to issue a notice to proceed with a low bid. They're also here to answer any questions that you may have of them and to remind you of our current funding. And I'll answer any questions you have. Our construction management team's here as well, if you have any questions for them.
Any questions for Jessica?
I've got one. The agenda items as the engineering department has submitted for a concurrence review with CDOT. I'm wondering, um, when do we anticipate that CDOT and all their wisdom might approve this?
They approved it this Tuesday? Tuesday. We have a letter from them approving us to issue our notice to proceed. They sped that, they fast-tracked that through for us. They've been very supportive, so...
When do we anticipate having the contractors' schedules so that we can know one way or the other, um, uh, what is going to happen with the construction management costs?
So, what, what would happen is, um, if council approves tonight, we would issue our notice to award. We would then, um, send out the contract to the contractor and have them sign, return it. We would sign it. We would then issue our notice to proceed and I believe they have two weeks to return us, um, their schedule after their notice to proceed.
One quick follow-up question. Is there incentive, disincentive of forty-three thousand dollars a day?
Yes. That is the lane rental fee for closing of the, of the Twenty-seventh Street Bridge. So, um, if for say the contractor got it done an hour less, they would get a per-rated amount per hour of however they opened it early. However, if they are delayed and they open it late, then they pay us, so...
The way the agenda item reads, it says for the bridge slide, but it's really meant to say for completion of the entire...
No, it's just for the slide period.
Just for the slide?
So the, the period that the bridges actually close.
So is there an incentive, disincentive for getting the whole thing done then?
They have to complete the project by November thirtieth of twenty nineteen. Um, however, there are always, um, acceptable delays, you know, if there's a weather issue or things, but that is a, um, a discussion that's had between the contractor, our construction management, city staff, and we all come to an agreement of what's acceptable and what's not, so...
You said that deadline is November thirtieth?
Mm-hmm.
I thought I saw something that said August nineteenth at some point.
August nineteenth is when the slide has to be completed by and that is the date school starts.
Thank you, sorry.
So the, the project won't be done. We still have in-water work. We still have landscaping, so...
Any further questions for Jessica?
The, how, I have a question, excuse me. Um, just the total amount of bid, uh, that has a mobilization broken out.
Mm-hmm.
Does that compare directly then with the... Sorry if I'm... So that's directly plugged in...
The total includes that.
Correlates to the construction costs?
Yeah.
Directly, okay.
Yeah, our, our last estimate, July, some date in July was about eight and a half million and the low bid is nine point eight.
Nine point eight, so...
Yes.
About an eighteen percent increase. Jim?
Um, yeah, two items. One is, um, I see included in the table here, the construction management contract, uh, for one point two million and there's a footnote that says this cost could go up, uh, because of the expanded working window. And, um, the, uh, I guess it's, well, the question I have is when will we know if that's going up? But I'll also share, I have some concern about it going up. It's already the equivalent of five full-time employees, um, to do this construction oversight and, and to think that it would go up twenty percent because the, um, uh, bids came in twenty percent too high is disturbing to me.
So that is a direct correlation to the approval of the construction contract. Um, it was approved, um, for a certain amount depending on the actual contractor's schedule and it would be adjusted per that schedule. So because we can't determine what the contractor's schedule is until we issue a contract, we have no way of knowing what the staffing level is going to be. Um, and I believe at that meeting, we, that was the way it was phrased and, and they would come back with a new proposal depending on what the schedule says, um, and that would have to be accepted by council. Now, we did extend the working window two months. We allowed them to mobilize in on the east bank in January. Um, originally, the project was supposed to be marched through November and that was to help facilitate soil nails and, and the wall... help facilitate soil nails and the wall abutment to be installed earlier, give them some more time and hopefully lower the bids. And I know Joe is prepared once we get the contractor's schedule back, which is what Mike was asking, they will prepare a new proposal and resubmit it. It may or may not go up. It just depends on what the contractor proposes as far as their schedule.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Jessica before I open it up to the public? Thanks, Jessica. Is anyone from the public who would like to comment on this item? All right. Seeing none, I will close it to public comment, bring it back to council for discussion and/or motion. Jonathan?
Move to approve the 27th Street Construction Contract.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
And we have a motion by Jonathan and a second by Shelley to approve the 27th Street Construction Contract.
For clarification, make that as recommended by staff with CDOT's concurrence, just so we're, we know which one we're approving.
I will, I'll accept that friendly amendment from the council. Yes, as you so eloquently stated.
And you agree with that?
I do agree with that. I'd also like that we're approving the 27th Street Bridge Construction Project. I think we left bridge out before.
I'm just reading the memo.
Just said 27th Street.
Yeah, yeah, I did. Oh, I'm just reading the agenda item.
Okay.
All right, um, so, can I ask for just one more clarification? You're approving the contract with the apparent low bid to Ralph L. Wadsworth.
Yes, I'll accept that friendly amendment as well. I'm going to get out of business and make a motion.
Sure you don't want to do this under council comments? We can go back.
Yeah, you know, if we want to do it under council comments, but then we probably should have addressed it during work session today when it was on the agenda for everybody to talk about.
Seems like more appropriate space. All right, um, I, I'm going to go ahead and make a comment. Early on in the, in the germination, if you would, of this project, I did not feel that this was a project that the city needed to take on at the time. I felt that it was appropriate that, that we could, or that we could appropriately address the scour concerns with the current bridge pier for hundreds of thousands of dollars as opposed to, you know, what is going to turn out to be $12 million. That being said, this is currently the worst rated bridge in the state of Colorado.
Out of 8,000?
As structurally and functionally deficient. Structurally, what's the correct term of art for the structural?
It is structurally deficient and functionally obsolete.
That's what I was looking for, there we go. And, well, I'm always, as an engineer, I'm always critical of, of us making really big decisions on, based on engineers' estimates and this is a perfect example why I don't think the engineers were in any way incompetent in their $8.5 million estimate before. This is not your average, every, average, everyday, run-of-the-mill project and it's going to be a fairly unique project so that we can minimize the downtime on that bridge for people who live in South Glenwood. So I, it's a long way of saying that despite my earlier objections to this project, I am going to support the funds. We have received, I don't have the numbers right, yeah, I do. So far, the entire, if I'm not mistaken, all of the design services were funded through an FHWA off-system bridge grant, is that correct?
About half of them.
About half.
We had $620,000 that was funded through our grant that Terry was able to obtain in 2013. We have another 1.1 million that goes towards construction from that same grant.
And, yeah, yeah, and then we also received a DOLA grant in the amount of $950,000, an FMLD grant in the amount of $500,000. Are there any additional grants? I know we're, we're currently in the process of discussing some funding, partnering, partnering with the county on this project, but are there other grants that we're looking for with respect to this project?
Jessica has been talking to CML about like another round of the original grant that we got. However, you know, once you put a project out to bid and award it, unless other than something like that or county funding, you're kind of, your grant looking is done.
Right, got it. So, you know, there is a very sizable amount of funds that have been obtained from, other than the city. We do have the bonding capacity to do this and I will be supporting the motion. Rick?
Yeah, I'll support the motion too. I just note that it's 18% above what we thought and I think that's well within a range of error, but it's still, you know, a little bit on the high side. And just for the public, every time that we put out an engineering estimate in the public view and we get those results back, we shouldn't be too surprised from time to time if these projects come in higher than we think. And this is one of the ANI projects and only one, but, you know, the more that you spend on a given project, the less that you have on other projects too. And so we're working hard to try to balance that and I know that we'll have that discussion on our bonding capacity coming up now, but I guess my message is ain't no free lunch.
Jim?
Yeah, thanks, Mike. I guess maybe a similar comment to Rick's but slightly, slightly different. I, I intend to, to vote for this for all the reasons that you stated, Mike, but, but I am very concerned again about the procedure that we go through. I think it's not intentionally, but nevertheless misleading to the public to tell them this is an $8 million project and then it's a $10 million project. And we're so far down the road at this point, you know, emotionally and otherwise invested, we're going to just quickly spend another $2 million bucks. There's a lot of things we could do with $2 million bucks and I'm not going to, I'm going to vote for this project. I'm not going to vote for any more big projects. I'm either going to abstain or vote no until we have a public discussion of our process that we go through. I believe that had we not told the whole world exactly what we were going to pay, we would have had a range of bids that probably varied around the engineering estimates. And I think as a result of our process, we've just spent an extra $2 million bucks that we could spend on a lot of other things. So until we have that public discussion, that's going to be my position. By public, I don't mean answering silly articles in the newspaper or getting on the social media and doing all that. I mean a public debate that we have amongst ourselves and then I will live with the answer, but until we have a serious debate about the way to do this, I'm out.
Thanks, Jim. Any further comments?
You have confidence that Watchworth can build a bridge in this vicinity, do it on time?
Well, you know, they just built a small bridge in town, so I would hope so.
I, I would just say real quick, very quick, that, you know, you did mention South Glenwood and, and it does benefit a lot of residents in South Glenwood, but, you know, looking at the ward map, it's actually pretty interesting. It's your ward, it's Steve's ward, it's my ward, it's at-large, so it's kind of that weird focal point where it kind of hits a lot of our interest and I think it'll be a huge benefit to the entire town and the community, you know, for the most part, not because it's a new construction, but the alternative is pretty devastating.
Thanks, Jonathan. Shelley?
Um, I'd just like to say I'm happy to see this project go forward. I think it's, it's a critical bridge. It carries a lot of traffic connecting the west side of town to Highway 82, Midland and everything going up the Four Mile Corridor. So because the bridge is rated so poorly, we need to get this project done. So I think this is a good time to do it. I appreciate staff's explanation of, you know, what the consequences are of deferring the maintenance more and trying to redo this project later. We're not going to save any money going into the future. You know, as far as our process, I think our engineers do the best in-house to estimate based on material costs and quantities and things like that, but, you know, this bridge is in a very steeply banked river. They're working in tight properties on either side, either banks of the river. We're doing the slide bridge construction, which is going to minimize our downtime and our having to detour traffic. Those are all complicating factors that I think can, can cause that price to be higher than what we may estimate in-house. So I appreciate that, you know, we can do the best job we can to estimate, but sometimes the projects come in higher than our estimates, sometimes they come in a little lower than our estimates. And this one, I think that 18%, while I wish it was closer to what we had estimated, I think it's within a reasonable amount considering this, the details of this project, so I'm going to vote for it. Thanks.
Steve?
Well, just on a serious note, and of course I'm going to support this project and I'm glad to see Wadsworth coming back to town. I think they did an incredible job for us. I am extremely concerned about the detour and traffic control. I'm concerned about the intersection of, of Seventh and or Eighth and Midland and how Midland's going to back up and how, once again, I'm not going to be able to get out of my driveway and my neighbors won't either. So I hope that Terry hadn't sold off his hats. I hope we have a plan and maybe it's not fully cooked or in place, but it's going to be challenging. We've never had, even when this bridge was closed, you know, in 2001 for 90 days, we didn't have near the population that we have up Four Mile and in South Glenwood. So those impacts are going to be rather tremendous, I think. Once again, we'll have huge issues if we don't have our plan in place for that.
So hopefully I can answer or alleviate some of those concerns. Currently, the specifications require the contractor to close the bridge at 6:00 PM on a Thursday and they have to schedule this date with us well in advance and they have 84 hours to do the slide and then they have to have it open to the public by 6:00 AM Monday. And that date cannot be during the Fourth of July or Strawberry Days. You know, these are controlled dates that have to be approved by the city. That was in an effort to lessen the impact to Sunlight Ski Resort when they open and to lessen the impacts to the school district and as well as meet our in-water dates that we have to to remove the piers in the water, so.
Right.
Hopefully we can control the traffic well. I think they did a, as good of a job as they could with the detour and we were able to get a lot of people off the roadway and we're keeping the trail open throughout a majority of the project with very minimal closure, so we'll have that facility available as well.
Well, it's a great plan and I hope they pull it off. I'm sure they will for a short closure and I think I'll be out of town.
Probably a good idea. It's going to be really cool to watch though, I mean.
It is, I'm looking forward to that. Yeah. Watching it fly.
All right. Any further comments? So the, for, to remind us, we have a motion to award the contract for the 27th Street Bridge to Ralph L. Wadsworth, the apparent low bidder. And that's basically it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Then we have a second.
And we, we did, we have a motion and a second. So we, this has all been discussion, so let's go ahead and call the question.
Ingraham, yes. Goldish, yes. Data, yes. Gambler, yes. Ley, yes. Worthy, yes. Cap, yes. Motion passed and dismissed.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next item is Resolution 2018-43, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Glenwood Springs, Colorado, adopting parks, rules and regulations.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. According to our Article 903030, council has the ability to adopt, formalize parks, rules and regulations with the intent to promote public health, safety and general welfare of parkland users. We have a myriad of different signs and rules, some of which are part of our Code 903050 that stipulates restrictions of parkland. Some are not, some are even conflicting. And so we recognized a, a need also to, to help enforcement and our police department be able to help enforce those rules to, to put together a official set of rules and regulations to be adopted, which has not actually happened to date. The commission worked with staff to come up with a succinct and manageable list of rules and regulations. We came up with 15 items. It's intended for these to replace all the various different signs that we have in the parks, some of which are very large blocks of text, some of which are visual signs that leave people a little confused as to the meaning of it. And so these will be placed in, in each park and be consistent throughout the park system. The Parks and Recreation Commission did go through these a couple times, make revisions and formally approved these and recommend them to the council in a motion on September We are, we are working on some additional changes to the code with our designated parklands. We have about 15 that are listed in the code and 16 which are not. We have some park areas that are no longer used as such, such as the rodeo grounds. We have some outdated legal descriptions of parklands and so there's a lot of cleaning up that needs to happen in that code and, and we will be bringing those back to council, but for tonight, we are looking for adoption of this set of park rules and regulations to be posted in parks and enforced.
Thanks, Brian. Any questions for Brian?
I've had a couple. I, I assume that the sheet that says Parks and Recreation Rules, that's Exhibit A, that will go with that?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, okay.
I had the same question because I, we did the cover but not the back.
Okay, but not the back part. Okay, so on park hours, 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, you know, there's a lot of people out at 6:00 AM. Can they not be in the park or, I mean, if they're going for the park, is there some penalty for being in the park? I, I understand kind of having hours, it helps with the no camping rule and all of that, but is there some?
Sure, yeah, and, you know, there are a lot of municipalities that stipulate, you know, dusk to dawn and, you know, and, and those hours change, you know, throughout the year and, and there will be a little bit of, you know, during the summertime, obviously there's more sunlight earlier in the morning. You know, this, this gives us, allows us the flexibility that if we do have a situation where that we do need to go in and enforce or eject someone from the park, we can do that. I don't think we're, we're planning on having any police officers at the park trying to catch those early morning joggers.
At 7:00 AM.
Yeah, that's not going to really be the intent of it.
Okay, great. It, you know, they look like good, basic rules to me from what I can tell. There's none really that I would disagree with. My other question though is, and I'm not familiar with the section of the code that is called out and I apologize that I didn't have time to go look it up, but what's the penalty if you break one of the rules? Is it misdemeanor, is it a?
Right, so it does, it does reference Section 102080, which is general penalties and violations of the code. There was language in there for a thousand, up to a thousand dollar fine and up to a year of incarceration. We are, we will be removing the incarceration portion of that, but keeping the up to a thousand dollar fine for violations.
So essentially what happens is that if you, sorry, if you were cited, it would be a summons into court because there's not a specific dollar amount on, you know, you know, speeding is, there's a set. You know, speeding is, there's a fine associated, right? Some of the violations in the code, we have set fines. For others, we just refer back to that general penalty provision, which is up to the thousand dollars. So it becomes a question for the judge to decide what that penalty is, should they happen to plead guilty in a discussion with the prosecutor or municipal court.
Okay. And I would assume as these rule, I mean, some of the rules are fairly, like, no glass bottles, no smoking in the park. There will be, will there be some warning system or kind of, is it going to be go into court the first time, first offense kind of thing? Maybe police teach...
I think typically, we try to educate rather than...
Right.
You know, it's going to vary on a case-by-case basis, but by and large, and Terry can speak to this, I mean, the goal always is, is to, you know, change behavior, not necessarily write a ticket.
Yes, that's definitely the case, especially where it's an area where an activity that draws our out-of-town guests and stuff.
Right.
We've issued tons of warnings for various violations like that, or even the no smoking downtown, where we come across people that are from out of town and go, oh, my goodness, I didn't know. It's different if we contact the same person for the second or third time.
Right, right.
Then we're probably talking about a summons.
Okay.
And that really speaks to the background of why we felt that this was necessary. You know, we do have park maintenance workers that, you know, oversee our parks and are caring for them, and when they do spot a violation, they'll go up and very politely inform them, hey, this is not allowed. For the majority of the time, people are compliant and, oh, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't realize.
Right.
But we do have those instances where we have someone that is confrontational or belligerent in their response, in which case, we usually try to get code enforcement to handle that. And this just allows an easier ability for them to enforce that, where some of these weren't necessarily identified in the code and therefore not necessarily enforceable by the police. And there's some gray area there, so this removes that and clarifies it.
Yeah, and I think it will be helpful to have consistent regulations throughout all the city parks.
Right, yes.
So, thanks, Brian.
So just a quick one, Brian. If we're banning fireworks, we're not banning our own fireworks, right?
No, we always reserve the right to break our own rules.
That's one of those exceptions where we don't have to follow our own rules and make everyone else.
Although, that might be up for discussion around the beginning of the year.
I have a concern, I guess, about the park hours issue. I understand that Chief Wilson or any of his officers are going to be standing out there arresting someone who jogs through the park at six A.M., but technically, they're in violation. And, you know, I have a concern. As a former jogger, I wish I still was, but I used to jog through Two Rivers Park every morning at six A.M. and probably earlier than that sometimes, and there was a lot of people out jogging. And I guess I wondered if we shouldn't provide some clear exception for certain, if someone is just passing through. I wouldn't go there to play a game of softball or anything like that. I was literally just going through the park, so...
I see a lot of people jogging with headlights on at five-thirty or six in the morning.
Or walking dogs.
What we also see, though, is we get complaints from those joggers that there is someone who is intoxicated, who is assaulting them, who is, you know, sleeping in the park that they run up against. And I think that's what more, what we're looking for the ability of is to trespass out those that are anti...
Jogging accepted or...
Or biking.
Or biking.
Well, can we, I mean, maybe something to this, Mike, is dawn to ten P.M. I mean, I agree. I don't want somebody to... I know people still go with their headlamps, but if somebody comes and like, oh, dawn's going to be in fifteen minutes, but if it's five forty-five and seven A.M. is, you know, an hour and fifteen minutes away, they literally might go, ugh.
We just ought to be tolerant to that kind of activity, I think.
I'm sure we will be.
That's not our intent.
Acceptive and kind of to be a pass-through use like that isn't what the spirit of the rules and regulations are about.
Right.
I mean, it's about a much greater move-in, takeover, you know, setup in the park for something without permit, without, you know, authorization and so forth for after-hours. That, to me, is very different than kind of pass-through use of your jogger or your person that's out walking their dog down the trail and they're going from point A to point B. That's...
I'm always shocked at how early people do these activities, and I only see it from my bed as I look across at it, you know.
They are out there. Late and early.
And these hours do fall into twilight, dark hours for a lot of the year. We do have lights in the parks that accommodate those. So it's, I feel it would be more restrictive and limiting if we did a dusk to dawn than if we actually set some hours. And then there's, you know, just practice discretion in, all right, is this an appropriate use at this time, or do we need to move these people on?
Yeah.
So on sort of a tangent, Brian, if we can ban smoking in our parks, why can't we ban smoking under the bridge?
We do.
We do.
We do, okay, but it doesn't matter.
During certain hours.
Very little. I mean, I just haven't seen any signs up there that say...
Well, there's signs all over downtown that...
We're working on a plan right now to have a more comprehensive locating of those signs as well. Since the Pet Bridge and the Car Bridge and everything are done and kind of our reconfiguration is done, we're working on some kind of restructuring of that so that we can try to be the most effective with the least amount of signs, but get the points we need to get.
We try to place those signs right above the cigarette receptacle so everyone can see them right there.
All right. Jim, sorry.
Yeah, a couple things. One is, first of all, I mean, I think they're well-written, you know, plain English, so I appreciate that. The two questions. One is for the smoking of marijuana, does that get addressed by number five, where it just says no smoking? Does that mean no smoking of anything?
There is a whole...
All smoking.
It's vaping, and it's marijuana, and it's regular cigarettes. It's, I can't remember everything.
So it's actually an expansion of the code, which does not, like, include vaping, for instance. Yeah.
Okay. And then the, I read the part about alcohol is limited to beer and wine. I mean, I'm okay with it, but what I thought was, you know, the problem is not really so much what somebody's drinking, it's how are they behaving regardless of whether they were drinking beer or whiskey, whatever it may be. And so is it, how do we, is it number eight here that says disturbing the peace? Is that sort of where you catch the drunken, disorderly person?
Sure. And in the code, it actually stipulates a specific amount that they're able to have on their person. We want to make these just as simple as possible.
Yeah.
We're not going to go out there with measuring cups and measure how much, you know, they have, but the intent of it is, you know, we don't want hard liquor there. I mean, come enjoy your picnic, have your glass of wine on the riverside. This isn't a place to go get smashed with your buddies.
Thank you.
All right. Any further questions for Brian? Thanks, Brian. Is there anyone in the public who would like to comment on this item?
My name is Pat Gratus. I live at thirteen seventeen Walts, and I just have one comment. We have signs in town, but could we please put the correct address on them? The new sign that they've put down at Deltes Park is a very nice sign. I appreciate it, but I drive past it every day. It says nine oh one on the east side of the street. Isn't that an even number?
Yes.
And it's been there as long as the sign's been there. I've called the city, maybe I called the wrong department, but I would think they would have told someone to change that sign because it bugs me every day. So when we have signs, let's put the right address on them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. There is a reason.
Yeah, I can speak to that real quickly. So the address identifiers are also part of the code changes we're doing. The nine oh one address designation was pulled from an old address designation that was given to us by Community Development way back in the day. It was on our website. It's actually always been there, even though we have not had that address listed on our park signs previously until we put out the new signs. You know, that did come up to our attention, and we realized the same thing, yeah, that, why is that? There is a, we do own parcels that are connected with that property on the other side also, and we think that's why that was given that odd designation. That is something we can change, but we are going through, and like I said, we have sixteen parks that are not a park of the designated parks listed in the code, and we're trying to get updated legal descriptions and updated address identifiers for all those, and we'll address all those issues as we go through.
So that was a historical mistake or...
Yeah, and I don't know if Robin knows any more about that or... I'm happy to throw him a round.
You were around then, Robin.
It's in Google.
It's goofy, but it is the address right now.
Oddly enough, you know, my house is also on that side of Midland, and forever, my address down there was fifteen oh three. And we finally had Community Development change it to the even number instead of the odd number, but I still get things coming addressed to me at that odd number on the east side of the street, so...
So we did not designate that. That was just tanned to us from what it has always been, but we are making corrections on all those.
So Veltus wasn't unique to that.
All right. Any further comments on this item? All right, seeing none, I will close it to public comment, bring it back to council for a motion.
I move that we approve our Solution forty-three dash twenty-eighteen for the Parks and Recreation Rules.
Second.
A motion by Shelley and a second by Steve to adopt or approve Resolution two thousand eighteen dash forty-one, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Glenwood Springs, Colorado. Nope, wrong one, sorry. Two thousand eighteen dash forty-three, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Glenwood Springs, Colorado, adopting parks' rules and regulations.
And regulations, yes. That's right.
Any further comments or questions? Let's call the question.
Ingraham, yes. Goldish, yes. Davis, yes. Gamba, yes. Lady, yes. Woody, yes. Cap, yes. Motion passed, adjourned.
Next item, Resolution two thousand eighteen dash forty-one, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Glenwood Springs, Colorado, adopting the Garfield County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Good evening. I am here this evening to ask that council adopt the multi-jurisdictional Garfield County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Doing so would make the city eligible for federal pre- and post-disaster mitigation funding that would otherwise not be available to the city. Garfield County staff took the lead in developing this plan in consultation with all of the county's jurisdictions and fire districts. It was formally adopted by the commissioners late last year. The plan provides an overview of the county's natural hazards and addresses the goals and actions that the county, the municipalities, and all of the citizens can take to reduce and mitigate their risks. Section seven addresses the hazards that are identified by each jurisdiction. In the case of Glenwood Springs, your staff from Community Development, the Engineering Department, and the Public Works Department identified wildfire, floods, landslide, and debris flow, and hazardous materials as the city's primary hazards. We also developed a series of action that we could take to help reduce the risks from those hazards. Again, staff is recommending that council adopt Resolution number forty-one, thereby adopting the Garfield County Hazard Mitigation Plan, and I'll take questions if you have them.
Thanks, Gretchen. Any questions for Gretchen? All right, thanks. So anyone in the public would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close it to public comment, bring it back to council, and for a motion. Or not. Let's just do nothing.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution twenty eighteen dash forty-one to adopt the Garfield County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Second.
All right. A motion by Jim and a second by Steve to approve Resolution two thousand eighteen dash forty-one, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Glenwood Springs, Colorado, adopting the Garfield County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Any further discussion? Let's call the...
I got one thing, right. I would hope at some point we could talk, not tonight, but about stormwater management plan and also the floodplain management plan. And I know that we've got more work than we can handle, but I think those are important enough issues that we should try to get to them sometime during our meeting cycle, so thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Okay, let's call the question.
Ingraham, yes. Goldish, yes. Davis, yes. Gamba, yes. Lady, yes. Woody, yes. Cap, yes. Motion passed.
All right. Next item is our budget discussion. Is there a presentation? Mr. Boyd.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. On Monday this week, we had the third of our work sessions for the budget, and during those three sessions, we've been through all the departments and all the funds. I think we've mostly got consensus on things. There's one change that I've made to the budget since we finished on Monday night, and that is the two, really, the Parks Master Plan, number one, and the Whitewater Park are funded from capital projects, and we dropped that from the Conservation Trust, so they're not funded in Conservation Trust. So I'm happy to make any other changes that you guys vote on tonight or direct me to. So tonight, we'll submit the budget. Tomorrow, we will open it up to the public for inspection, if anybody would like to see it. Two weeks from tonight on the eighteenth, we'll have a public hearing so that you can hear from anybody in the public that would like to be heard. At that point, you'll have the chance to make any other changes that you would like to make, and then you'll adopt the budget in the first meeting in November, which I believe is the first. Any changes after that will have to be made by resolution, and the budget will be formally appropriated in the first meeting in December. So just a couple of highlights. This budget has a two percent increase in sales tax revenue assumed over the twenty-eighteen budget number. There's a three percent cost of living increase for staff. The general fund has a small surplus budgeted at the end of the year. I think that we've got all of the initiatives that you guys have directed us to put in the budget in there. It does have a twenty-one, twenty-two-point-one-eight million-dollar bond in the budget that gives you a twenty-million-dollar bond fund for capital projects and infrastructure. I think we've got sufficient reserves in all of our fund. I think the budget is transparent and gets flexible, and I believe that it meets all of FAB's recommendations. So I think you guys have put together a good budget, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thanks, Steve. Any questions? Jim?
Yeah. I mean, first of all, I'll comment, thank you for your compliment to us, but I think it really needs to go the other way. So thanks to Deborah, Hugh, Yvette, and frankly, all of the department heads and city staff for really an excellent job, in my opinion, on the budget you've presented to us. My question is, I do have an item that I would like to sort of propose to change, and maybe, I don't know if it's a question for you, Steve, or for you, mayor, as to, do we do that this evening through a motion or...
Yeah, this would be the opportunity for us to, I mean, technically, we could make changes to the budget up through the first meeting in November, and after that, we could still make changes to the budget as a supplemental appropriation or whatever.
Yes, you are correct, but I think we did, if you know of changes you would like to see, we thought this would be a good opportunity, so we kind of put it on.
Well, let me describe, before doing a motion, what it is I'm getting at, and then we can make the motion.
And we'll want to open this up to the public.
Yeah, yeah, so I'll just share with you then. It really relates to recommending and or asking or what have you the DDA and the Tourism Promotion Board to each contribute fifty thousand dollars. um, to the maintenance of the, uh, downtown facilities.
I think, as the mayor pointed out, we do not, we can't necessarily just change the DDA's budget. The tourism budget is indeed your budget, they're not a separate legal entity. So I think if you guys want to use some of tourism's budget, you can just, you know, direct us to do that. I think if you're interested in using funds from the DDA budget, you should probably ask us or the council liaison to discuss it with the DDA board.
Okay, so we can frame the motion, whatever, in that way?
Yes.
And, and, uh, just for what it's worth, if we're looking to try to, to get $100,000 in total from those two entities, if we look at the, the, if we make the contribution by each entity proportionate to their, um, their own budgets, then it would be $60,000 from the Tourism Promotion and 40 from the DDA.
Yeah, and that would be acceptable to me.
Any further comments, questions? Uh, I think there was also a suggestion that we increase the funding to the, uh, Historical Society in the amount of, I think, an additional $10,000.
Yeah, and I was going to make a motion on that, but after we hear any public comment or?
All right.
I had a couple of other items to discuss, but I, should we do it now or wait?
Um, I, I think, I think, I don't know, should I open up the public comment before?
This isn't a formal budget hearing, so you wouldn't necessarily have to open it up to recall on that. It may be more efficient to open it up to the public, see if you have any comments, and then through any motions you may need or revisions you need to make.
Okay. Right, uh, while Steve is here, did you?
Well, I started to say, we, you know, we briefly talked about reallocation or considering reallocation of the theater, uh, fund that's been sitting there for years and years. And, um, might be put to better use in a different place. Now, I think that's a larger discussion probably, that would probably take another 40 minutes or so the way we go on, but I don't want it to fall off the plate completely. And, uh, I'm assuming that we can bring it back at a different time and, and, uh, discuss that later in the year. Just a reallocation of a line item.
Ryan, this is your document, it's a living document, even over the course of the year. But there will be changes in revenue, things will change.
Sure.
So it's your document.
Other needs arise and fall.
Well, if I, so the other, I might as well put the other things. The other things that I've, I'm considering that I'd like to see in the budget that aren't there are, um, you know, we had this idea come up with South Canyon this year. We still have, you know, issues and could certainly use cleanup on that Hot Springs area. And, and, and we have development going on out there, we just put some mountain bike trails in. So I'd like to see us have a formal master plan and go through that planning process, I think, with staff or if we need to hire a consultant for part of it. I don't want to see it be a hugely expensive plan, but I was hoping we could maybe put 50 to 100,000 in the budget to help coordinate a plan that has public input and come up with the South Canyon master plan for that park area. Um, Parks and Rec would be involved and is what I'm envisioning. The other piece would be to have some funding in there. Um, that bike path along Highway Six from Trayver Trail, I guess it starts, to Donigan or so, really needs some help. It's pretty heavily used. I know engineering had a, had a cost estimate for what it would take to really go in and do it right. I'm wondering if for this year, um, if there's some way to have some money in there, at least to fix it in place and then do more formal engineering for it. You know, to get it more writeable and cleaned up for this, this next.
So, and we did talk about that with Terry, uh, last week, or Monday night, it seemed like last week.
Yeah, it seems like last week, correct? We did. I don't know if there might be some grant funding for that that we could look at or if.
Well, uh, you know, I think, uh, we've come to the agreement that we can go and patch the cracks and mill them out, level them, uh, as sort of a stopgap measure, uh, right after spring cleanup for however long that takes, uh, next year. And so, and we can do that within the existing budget.
Oh, really?
It has been incorporated.
But that doesn't include, you know, at some point, we're going to want to overlay that. I know that Terry knows a lot about drainage and there's some standing water there. There's also the idea of some signage there to keep vehicle traffic, four-wheel vehicle traffic from parking on, you know, that path, which I've seen a few semis do that, and I've woken up a few semi drivers and said, you know, you're not supposed to park here. But anyway, so, I, I mean, it's just a Band-Aid for now, but, uh, you know, I feel good about the Band-Aid. I'm looking for the full gauze, uh, sort of, uh, that we can put on this and really make it shine at some point.
Okay, so if that's, if that's handled, then I'll withdraw that piece, but, yeah.
If I may, I know everyone is very excited about the South Canyon plan. On this agenda, we just agreed to take on Hanging Lake, and Brian will be a huge part of that. There is so much in this budget that I'm already worried we're not going to get to. That if you want to add to it, just tell me what you want to take off. Very, very respectfully, I'm just, I just can't.
They don't feel there's, there's staff capacity to do that.
I think we're stretched really, really thin, and we're going to try really hard to get everything done that you already want.
So do we have any other development going on up there?
Just the bike pass. I don't think we're anticipating doing any more bike pass or, kind of is what it is. I think we can look at it in 2020, or we can do some, not do something else.
Because I'd like to do it before.
Second meeting in April and, uh.
It'd be nice to do it before the gun club comes up for renewal too, which I know is a ways out, but, yeah, okay.
Race over.
Race over.
I, I have a question for Brian. Do you, you know, we hired, uh, Patrick, Special Events Coordinator, uh, eight months ago or so. Do you feel that he has sufficient budget? You know, one of the things that, you know, I know when we, uh, approved his position last year was more events and more vitality and, um, you know, we've had some people in town that have done things like that, and, and they're not in this town anymore, and not that, you know, their events were amazing blowout, uh, uh, you know, five-point film festival type events anyway, but do you feel that Patrick has enough budget and enough, um, yeah, I guess budget, you know, money is power, but do you, he has enough support? That's the word I'm looking for, support via this budget process to be able to do the things that he and you would like to do?
No.
Can we give him more money?
You have to take money away from something.
We, we did.
They just kind of wear.
Theater.
Brian, it will.
I keep saying theater.
That'll be a separate work session. Will you just reallocate those?
We did develop a very, uh, basic event schedule and a budget with that, and came out to about $137,000. We are going to make do with stealing Deborah's, um, non-discretionary event budget and utilizing that and any leftover budget that we have from the arts, uh, center budget if needed. And so we're, so we're taking that 50,000 and we're supplementing it with grant funding. For instance, we, um, council, uh, we put forward council, we are, uh, going after a $25,000, uh, matching, one-to-one matching grant, fund for putting on concert series. And there's other opportunities like that that we'll, we'll pursue. So we'll take that 50,000 and we'll quadruple it through alternative, uh, revenue sources.
Yeah, I just want, and as opportunities come up, you know, I know there's been talk about, uh, you know, a gravel grinder race or things like that throughout the year. These opportunities come to fruition, I just want to make sure we're in a position to be able to take advantage of some of these things.
Yeah, and we'll definitely look at events that can be sustainable, that don't require subsidy from the city, you know, whether those are through sponsorships or through, uh, vendor, uh, fees, different things like that, where we can get some extra revenue and do some fun stuff. I mean, we, we're creating all these amazing spaces, now what are we going to do with them? You know, we're great at creating things and then, and then not come up with a plan, well, now what? And, and that's specifically what Pat and I are working on, putting together a plan to, to activate and, and really make the use and get a good return on investment from the infrastructure investment we're putting into these areas.
Thank you, Brian, appreciate it. You're back.
Were we voting on something?
Did we have public?
We're going to open up a comment?
Yeah.
Yeah, does anyone have any other questions for Steve at this time? All right. I will open it up to public comment if anyone from the public has any comments about our draft as it exists today, I mean, our draft budget as it exists today. All right, seeing none, we'll just go out and spend, what is it, a 30 in total, 35 million dollar budget?
It's probably a little more than that, but.
Give or take. Okay.
Try.
All right, so, uh, bring it back to council for a discussion, um, and a motion. Actually, it's on here as a.
The only motions you need are if you want to change something in the document. It's the cleanest way for us to get that changed, right? And my, my request would be that, you know.
You don't.
Is it, is he be efficient with it? So it's Clay, Steve, and Deborah what they need to do.
I'll make a motion, if my lights, am I, am I blinking? I'll make a motion that we, um, revise the Tourism Promotion Fund budget to, uh, transfer $60,000 into the, which fund?
From reserves.
Into the fund, where would we transfer it to? Not ANI, right?
Where do, where do you specifically?
For the downtown maintenance. Right now, we have 425.
Transfer it from the Tourism Promotion Fund into ANI.
We would. Go into ANI? Okay, into ANI to, um, share in the costs of the added downtown maintenance for some of the amenities in that area. And, um, I would also recommend the 40,000 be, um, requested from the DDA budget, that that also go into ANI for the same purpose, totaling, a total of $100,000 to assist and partner in the cost of extra downtown maintenance for our visitors.
Second.
Was it, is that your light blinking or did you want to talk as well?
No, I, 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 this is when I thought we'd all get to pile on and say what we all wanted like Christmas, but I think we should take these individually and vote on them.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
Not to do your job, I'm sorry.
No, that, that's fine.
It seems like we should take that one individually and vote on it as well, because once and then with the budget, right? The way that's, I mean, like I, maybe I won't vote, maybe I don't support that motion, but I do support.
Yeah, and that, that's all we're talking.
I'm voting on the budget.
Voting on just that.
Requesting that that change be added to the, to the.
And I, you know, I, I, I'll make a quick comment on it. I, I appreciate the, the perspective that, you know, why are we separating maintenance of, of downtown amenities from any other area of town? And, and I guess, um, I, I, I think downtown is a little bit different from the perspective that, for example, the street in front of my house, and this isn't a slam on the streets department, but I think it probably gets swept twice a year, you know? I'm hoping the downtown sidewalks get swept a heck of a lot more than twice a year, so, um, and that's what we're paying for, is we're, we're actually paying for some extra maintenance than we would do in other parts of town. And so for that reason, I do think it's appropriate that, um, the different entities that, um, benefit from, you know, the, the, improvements that we're, we've built and that we are hoping to build, and, uh, from keeping those improvements maintained in good shape, I, I, I think it's important that those entities, um, help in a little, in a, in a little ways. So I, I will support that motion. Your light's still blinking.
No, I'm sorry, that, that's.
Jim, you're.
I'm covered.
Okay. Uh, any further comments or questions on this motion as it stands? We have a motion to, um, shift $60,000. What?
Rick has a comment.
I want to make a comment before we vote, but.
Okay, we, uh, let me just repeat the motion. We have a motion to, uh, um, shift $60,000 from the Tourism Promotion Budget into the ANI Budget uh, to go toward maintenance of downtown improvements. And a, the motion also includes a, that we make a request to the DDA to ask them to designate $40,000 out of their budget, um, for the same purpose.
Can I, can I make a friendly, uh, a question, a clarifying question? Uh, you said out of their budget. In the past, we've talked about out of the reserves. Can, is it, does it matter?
It's six of one, half a dozen of the other.
Okay.
It's just coming from, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So, um.
Thanks.
All right, um, Rick?
Yeah, just, uh, just a quick note. I mean, so that we don't do this every year, and, you know, go through sort of the damage of, uh, pulling back money and some of which we control and some of which we don't control. I think it would be good to ask staff to, uh, look to establish some permanent fund for downtown maintenance and to, um, look at, um, making that happen with maybe funds that we have on hand and then maybe a standing sort of contribution from the funds that we don't control, like the DDA. Anyway, just a comment, I mean, I don't want to have this discussion again in 2019 and 2020 and, you know, make it sound like it's kind of iffy when it's an ongoing absolute need for downtown.
That was kind of what we did in 2017 when we created the downtown maintenance line item in the ANI budget. Was so it, you could track it and it could have a funding source. We can add to it.
But you just have to take the money from other parts of the budget in order to fund it, and that's why we're doing the hundred here, right?
Based upon council's direction to do so. ANI, we did budget $400,000 in ANI for this expense. And we will then reduce that ANI line item by whatever additional. So if, you know, you guys do approve the $60,000 from the tourism, we will reduce what we're putting in ANI into that line item.
But right now, we're doing it one year at a time.
Yes.
Yeah, and that's my point.
Does it have a DDA too or just?
No, no, where do you go? It's just tourism, then we're making a request to the DDA to, to, uh, for them to consider $40,000 from them, so.
Oh, is there another light?
Um, where, the lights are screwed up because.
Oh, is that what it is?
Or you can just, can you, can you clear?
Okay, I'll take, take you off and I'll take, uh, Jim, take you off, okay? Um, and Rick, I can take you off. Shelley, you're up.
I had a quick question along, along that same lines for Steve and, and pardon me if you can't answer it, just let me know, but. So we've added a line item now to ANI that's quite substantial. It's up to 425 a year right now, right? In ANI for the downtown maintenance. 450. Um, and that doesn't include a lot of these planned improvements, like fountains and things that are supposedly.
It actually does include those.
Yeah. Does it include those?
It does include.
Okay, I don't know if it includes the roundabout it, pine and moral. I think it includes everything else. But it does include, okay, great.
To our best estimate.
So I guess my question for you is how, what impact does that have to our bonding capacity in the future? I mean, that's taking out, what's, what's 450,000 a year, it translated into, that's a payment we can't make on a bond issue?
Yeah, I don't think that that's going to make a, uh, really significant difference in our bonding capacity. I mean, we've got a number of constraints when we bond. You know, one constraint is how much we can legally bond for, which is roughly $54 million. Another constraint is how much work can we get done in a year? And another constraint is, you know, what is our current financial situation? But a half a million dollars in our overall expenditures is.
But a half a million dollars in our overall expenditures is, I certainly don't want to say that that's immaterial, but from a bonding perspective, I don't think it'd make a big difference.
From that fund, from a bonding perspective, it's not a big hit. Okay, that was my question. Thanks.
All right. Any further questions or comments? Let's go ahead and call the question.
Ingram, yes. Goldish, yes. Davis, no. Gamba, yes. Leahy, no. Worris, yes. Cap, yes. Motion passes.
Just one quick question. Who would you like to reach out to the DDA board, which I think to be staff, or would you like it to be a council member?
My comment to those, I've already reached out to them, so. And told them that was probably coming, so that I didn't want them to be blindsided by this. So I'm sure they'll take that up on their next agenda item.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we fund the historical society for fifty thousand, like we've done, and that any additional funds that they see fit to request, they go through the normal grant process as every other nonprofit has to do, so that we don't have to sit up here and continue to make decisions on a one-off basis. That's my motion. I'm going to give a little editorial on that, and I think that we do have a grant process. It sucks, but it is what we have today, and I think that in order to prevent us from being taken out for lunch, or prevent us from being solicited individually to get an extra ten thousand dollars or five thousand dollars or whatnot, this is why the grant committee is set up the way it's set up, with all of its faults. You know, if this is, if we do decide to elect to increase their funding because of an off comment that was made a couple of weeks ago, on the same day they decided to cancel their fundraiser that raised ten thousand dollars, then I think we are literally opening the door to any nonprofit just to ask us questions, and we kind of subvert that. I'm not opposed to the grants committee giving them an extra ten thousand dollars, but I'd like for them to go through that process with the grants committee for that extra ten thousand dollars, not the fifty thousand that we've given them historically.
All right, there's a motion. Is there a second? All right, not hearing a second, the motion dies for lack of a second, so. Shelley?
That was an interesting motion, and I appreciate that. And, and my hesitation is, because I'm the one who suggested that we do increase their funding, and, and part of that is because they've, they've had a historic kind of growth in funding. We, we had an email from staff on that, on, on what that growth of their funding has been over the years, and, and it's been a very slow growth, and I, I would put it out there that it's been quite a bit slower than the cost of doing business would increase over that same amount of time. But I'm sympathetic to the concept of what you, you put forward, mainly because, yes, they did cancel the fundraiser, which the ghost walk was, I thought, a good event for town. It brings people to town, and, and it was a fundraising event for them. My other hesitation is, they, they were supposed to be on our agenda the past two meetings for us to, to get an update from them, and we have not had that, so I'm.
Bill Kite's daughter went into labor today. There was a good reason.
Well, that's a very good reason.
It's sort of a historic day.
And the one before that, he was coming, he went with me to Ignacio.
To, right, to go visit.
So there was a good reason for him to miss both of them.
So I do understand that, but I'm hesitant to just automatically increase that funding without at least having a conversation with the group and having, you know, some explanation on their fundraising activities.
And so my motion was not to increase the funding. My, my motion was to keep it separate, but to tie any increase, any asked increase to the grants process, every other non-profit.
Coming to the grant process.
Yeah.
At least for this year.
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, two thousand nineteen, excuse me, two thousand nineteen.
Right, right. So anyway, I'm just pontificating that I'm mixed on this and have to think about it a little bit.
I would be willing to, Shelley, just to kind of answer your, your point. I'd be willing to support a motion that funds them at sixty, but, but with a provision that it's a sort of a one-time item, and also contingent that they come back to us on, on how they intend to, with a plan to reestablish the ghost walk, you know, to re, to reestablish the ghost walk.
Some type of event.
Yeah.
Is there, is there a way, sorry, I pushed my talk, but I'm not flashing, but I, I feel that we're rewarding, we're giving them ten thousand dollars as a reward for canceling their fundraiser.
They canceled their fundraiser because it was hugely volunteer-intensive, and the volunteers, it was the same volunteers that have been doing it for twenty-some years, and many of them have moved away, or in some cases passed away, and it just wasn't functional to keep that particular fundraiser going any further.
Well.
It wasn't, it wasn't a, I, I don't think it was a, we're going to cancel the fundraiser because we can get ten thousand dollars from the city. I don't think that was the thinking at all. I.
I'm saying the timing of that probably sucks. I, I probably agree with you that that wasn't the intent, but when a nonprofit, I mean, I had a fundraiser and I made ten thousand dollars every year for the Early Childhood Network, and that's not what we did, that wasn't our mission, we sucked at it, but it engages the community, it's an event for the community, it engages the community with your organization, there's a lot of reasons to continue to have a fundraiser, and if you're not able as an organization to recruit new people, new volunteers, in order to be able to continue a fundraiser, it doesn't even have to be a ghost walk, it could be something else, then I think that speaks to the public support of your organization. If you can't get people to volunteer, one of the things funders look at as far as, do you have public support, is number of volunteer hours. Number of volunteer hours are as important as local funding. And so I feel that if we're going to look at this organization and say, we're going to use taxpayer dollars to support it and increase the level of support, then I'd want to know, why doesn't the community support them through their volunteer hours? And they had a ballot initiative last year that failed, so why has the community directly spoken and said that we don't want to fund them with our tax dollars? I'm not saying they're not a worthy organization, I'm just saying the community has spoken in two different ways, one with a ballot initiative and two with their lack of volunteer hours. So I don't know that we should be taking it upon ourselves to speak for the community when they've had their voices, they've had an opportunity to have their voices heard twice. But, but I don't think there's any nefarious thing, we're going to cancel this and then have the taxpayer do it. I, I don't, to your point, Mike, I, I agree with you on that.
Rick?
Well, you know, Jonathan, maybe we, we could give them a ghost of a chance here. And by that, I mean, give them an opportunity to sort of come before us and talk about alternatives that they might have to capture that ten thousand dollars. You know, and I'd be fine with that, I'd be fine with Jim Ingram's idea that it's a, it's like a one-off, but then next fall, or whenever the financial advisory board reconfigures the grant process, that they go through that process for the ten thousand dollars. But here's the other point, they haven't had an increase since nineteen ninety-nine, according to figures provided to us by Mr. Boyd. And, you know, some of that is maybe their own doing, you know, and not coming with requests since nineteen ninety-nine, but they were formerly part of the A and I bond. They were left out of the last A and I bond, and so they've been sort of kind of floating out there, but they've been floating in a way that really hasn't been active enough to come forward and say, you know, we really need to discuss, you know, this fifty thousand dollars and why it should be increased. So whether it's now, or as a result of a presentation that they would make, let's say in several weeks or so, but I think that long-term, the solution is that they go through the grant program, the community grant program, just as every other organization would.
And, so maybe I, I can agree with Jim. I'm sorry, I'm online.
Yeah, how about we let Jim?
Yeah, take hold of this mic. Jim, that's you then.
Thank you.
Jim, your, your button is flashing.
Oh, it's up and said, I'm good.
It's like trying to do.
Well, you know, earlier I, I was, but then people before me said what I was going to say, so.
Steve?
Was I going to talk?
Your button is flashing.
We go on and on, you know, I, I think that, that this program is really important to Glenwood, whether it passed or didn't pass. I think that history in this community is, is really a part of this community and important. I agree with everything Rick just said. I think that we should have them, Bill, come before us and make some kind of presentation, and we should consider that at this juncture. I think their funding should be increased because it hasn't been in, what, twenty years or something?
Twenty?
I, I think that, you know, I, I think it's, I'm shocked that ten would be enough, actually. They probably need a hundred, you know, to really pick up the program and do a better job of, of, of running that program. And I do think that they should go through the channels to get any funding in the future, even though that program as well sucks. And hopefully we'll fix that in the next year, so.
Yeah, fix the grant process.
So I don't know where that leaves any kind of.
The last thing, I, I mean, I'm, I'm cool, but.
You're now flashing.
I'm now flashing. The only thing I, I guess, Jim, you know, as far as the one-time thing, I'd like to make one last pitch, can we make that ten thousand dollars contingent up on them doing? Can we make that ten thousand for them to do a special event? Or are we going to give the money and then hope that they do a special event? Or, or what is that money, extra money for? Is it just because they need it? Or are we going to ask them to do something with it? Or, because you, you kind of alluded to, let's give them the money, but we expect to see something. And, and should we say, here's what we expect to see for the ten thousand dollars, or just give it to them and hope? I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to break your spot, I'm just.
I'll answer your question. I mean, I, I would, if I was making the motion, I would just give it to them, not tell them this is for this or that, because we've heard some people say, well, it's really to compensate them for the increase in their costs over the years. But I would like to have them come and tell us, and I think we would all like to see that ghost walk reinstated. I've heard what you did, Mike, a number of the original volunteers have gotten, you know, long in the tooth, but if I were managing it, as you said, John, then I would have been sort of saying, hey, there are a lot of young kids in the acting program at the high schools love to be up there doing that, and I would have gotten ahead of it and keep, kept it going, and I think they can get it going again. So I would like to build that into when we give them the increase that they, you know, would also like for them to come and present how they're going to get the ghost walk going again. That's the way I would do it. I don't know if that answers your.
Sure. Okay.
So if, if I may, that's how you do it, right? If I may, could I suggest maybe we leave the fifty thousand dollars where it is for now? We've got fifty thousand dollars in the budget. It sounds like this is a little bit of a bigger discussion, but you guys don't really need to make this decision tonight. I mean, after you hear from the historical society and have some more discussion, it's easy enough to just do a supplemental appropriation for that ten thousand dollars or whatever you guys would like to, to contribute to them.
Do you think we're going to let you off that easy?
I was going to say, we got two hours and twenty minutes left.
I, I said, if I may.
Magic words.
It only works for him.
I'm good. You know, I'd certainly like to see Bill come up and give us a presentation on what his, their needs are, and I think we should consider it separately, separate from this budget at this juncture.
That would be prudent.
Thank you.
At this juncture? Never mind.
It's just a different strategy.
Okay. Glad you caught my, Shelley?
Because somebody asked, I, I guess I see the increase as more of a kind of cost of living, because basically what we're doing with this fifty thousand is we're funding a director for the historical museum. I think that's a needed and important position for the town in keeping our history alive. So to me, even though I want to see the ghost walk come back, I'd, I'd like to have that discussion with them, because I don't have a good understanding of why they got rid of it, I mean, just what was in the paper, but I'd like to hear it from them as to, if there is a good way to bring it back, but I don't know that I want to tie the funding to that. So it's just my thoughts, but I'm all for putting off this conversation until we can have that group come back and Bill come back and have that conversation with them.
The only comment I want to make is just an observation that this is the second time we've approved a, what, an eleven million dollar expenditure in about five minutes, and we spoke about a ten thousand dollar expenditure for forty-five minutes, so.
Good point.
Go figure.
It's funny, I just, everyone said, should I say that?
That's why I said if, if I.
Although in fairness, we've spent probably four hundred hours talking about the eleven million dollar expenditure over the last few months.
Probably.
And we changed private property rights in five minutes, so we're on a roll tonight.
We haven't actually changed them yet.
And we're having all the groups come back.
Well, we're going to have more discussion about that.
Yep. We roll. All right, so any further desired changes to the budget? Would like to take the entire legal budget and transfer it to the council Tahiti fund and.
If it'll keep Jonathan from pushing his button.
It'd be quick, it'd be real quick. Talk about it next week, next time.
Motion on the budget.
No, we don't, no, we don't, we don't vote on the budget. Not tonight.
Two more.
Now we get to move on. Thanks, Steve. You probably get to still stay up here, would be my guess, but the next item is the Plan of Finance Resolution. This is Resolution two thousand eighteen dash forty-two. A resolution of the City of Glundred Springs, Colorado, declaring the intent of the city council to proceed with the plan of finance authorized at an election held on November eighth, two thousand sixteen, and directing city staff, agents, and advisors to proceed with preparation of an ordinance for consideration by the city council, and to undertake such actions as may be necessary to put such plan into effect, following final direction by the city council.
Good evening, Mr. May, council. We hired a firm called North Slope Capital Advisors some time ago to be our municipal advisor and advise us in the accumulation of some debt to finance infrastructure projects. We selected Stiefel Nicholas as our placement agent in that process. Stiefel oversaw an RFP process that netted eleven qualified responses. There were several different funding designs that were submitted through those, through those responses. To meet our liquidity needs, one of the things that we considered is funding this bond or this debt in two tranches. One tranche would happen in June, or, excuse me, in December twenty eighteen, or as soon as we can get it done, and the other would happen about June of two thousand and nineteen. The amount of the bond in total is twenty-two point one eight million dollars that was recommended. That gives you guys a twenty million dollar project fund that you can use to spend however you see fit as things unfold, and we know a little bit more about what we might get from the county or other participants in the Twenty-Seventh Street Bridge and South Midland, et cetera. Tonight, you've kind of committed about seven point seven million of that twenty million dollars to get underway with the Seventh Street Bridge, and the rest of it, you guys can appropriate however you see fit. The all-in interest rate is somewhere around three point two percent over fifteen years. We need to spend a total of seventeen million dollars within the first three years, or at least have the expectation that we're going to do that. Our first year, we have an interest-only payment of roughly four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, and then the next fourteen years, we'll pay roughly one point nine million dollars in principal and interest. In October this month, we paid off the previous A and I bond. That costs us about one point eight million dollars a year, so we're essentially replacing that, that payment. So I think we need the money, and we have the infrastructure projects to do it. I think we can afford this twenty million dollars. Gives you guys some flexibility to make your decisions over time. We've been through, I think, a solid process, and we've had. over time. We've been through, I think, a solid process, and we've had involvement from, and I think the approval of our city manager and our finance director, our city attorney has been involved, Kutek Rock is who we selected as bond counsel. They got behind it. North Slope is the one that recommended this structure to us. Stiefel has been a good partner. They're good with it. The bank we selected is JP Morgan, same bank that we went with in the last time we bonded in A&amp;I, and your financial advisory board has supported this with a unanimous vote. So, if that's good with everybody, the resolution that we're gonna pass tonight authorizes staff to continue forward and see if we can get finalized terms, and then we will bring back an ordinance to you guys that essentially closes that transaction. So, that's just kind of a brief overview, and I'm happy to take any questions. Michael Lund from Stiefel Nicholas is here as well. You guys have any questions for Stiefel? Thanks for coming. Appreciate that.
Thanks for sitting here for the whole meeting.
Any questions for Steve? All right. So we need, yeah, I know, we just need to say we're gonna give the Historical Society, you know, $22 million, and then we'll talk, be done with it in five minutes.
Can we just raise the ever, like, spending authority?
Is there anyone in the public who would like to comment on this item? We're looking at borrowing $22 million, folks. All right. All right. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council and for a motion, for discussion into our motion. Oh, lights. Jim, sorry.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion. The council adopted Resolution 2018-42, a resolution of the City of Glenwood Springs, Colorado, declaring the intent of the City Council to proceed with the plan of finance authorized at an election held on November 8, 2016, and directing city staff, agents, and advisors to proceed with preparation of an ordinance for consideration by the City Council, and to undertake such actions as may be necessary to put such plan into effect, following final direction by the City Council.
Motion, there's a second. There's a second. Is there a third? A motion by Jim and a second by Steve to approve Resolution 2018-42. Any further questions or comments? Shelley, you'd like me to flash you?
I'd just like to make the comment that, you know, I agree with this. I'll vote for it. I was kind of hoping that we would bond for a slightly smaller amount on this first go-round. Just thinking that we could probably get by with 15, but I think at our work session, Steve made a good argument that having the extra funding available will help us secure more projects and maybe move more projects forward, since we are looking at doing the 6th Street, and we have the South Midland project coming up also, and possibly Two Rivers Park. So, those are large projects. That being said, I'd just like us to be extra diligent in spending this money and make sure we get the best value for every dollar of it, so. That's it. Thanks.
Thanks, Shelley. Jonathan?
Yeah, I guess I echo Shelley's anxiety a bit about that number. I'll vote for it because I want to ensure that there's enough money to do the projects that were listed in the A&amp;I ballot language. That being said, just understand with $22 million spend of a $40 million hard cap-ish, that, you know, setting aside $15 million for South Bridge, that literally leaves eight, or $3 million left for the two other projects, which are the Confluence and the 6th Street redevelopment. So if we're comfortable with those numbers, or we think that the $40 million in sales tax revenue will go up and conversely have more money, or we'll find other ways to do those things, that's fine. I just, we need to know the future councils are not gonna have the money, and A&amp;I will have to answer to that.
Thanks, Jonathan. Rick?
Yeah, you know, I think the public ought to know that the authorization was up to $53 million, and that staff has convinced council, and some council members have convinced other council members, that $20 million is a much more prudent amount to bond for. And I get all kinds of comments about, you know, what's gonna happen up to the $53 million? I mean, you know, what's $2 million here and $3 million there, and pretty soon you're talking real money. So there's this sort of perception here that the city has really deep pockets. I think the city has real deep staff capacity and a great council, but we can't go printing money. And so I was kind of shocked, you know, when I first got on council, that we wouldn't, you know, look at some of these grandiose dreams that we have. And I always tell people, we have like a hundred million dollars worth of great ideas, and now we'll have about $20 million to actually pay for them. And I think that the 18% increase in South Bridge, you know, we're gonna see that on Midland, we're gonna see that on all of these projects. So even though we're bounded by $20 million, there are gonna be some pretty hard decisions, I think, that are going to be facing us. And so the hundred million dollar sort of pie in the sky stuff is gone, and we'll really be in a position of looking at that $20 million and trying to do, I think, the best that we can with it, because I don't think there will be another bond after this $20 million. And like Jonathan says, you know, this is it, and the coming folks after us on the council are gonna be, you know, faced with doing what other councils have done to pay off the bond that we just retired. Finding $1.8 million or $2 million a year to do that is not an easy task either, so. I plan to vote for it.
All right. Any further comments?
I would just make a quick comment that I would reiterate what Jim said earlier, that one element that was, again, misconstrued completely in a letter to the editor today was the policy we have of publishing and making public our engineers' estimates that are rarely, if ever, correct and are not helpful at all in being efficient in terms of us getting good bids and spending these dollars wisely. And I think that we should revisit that discussion and look at that. Just to address the point that was made in the letter to the editor, that we were keeping the amount secret, there's nothing, not a dollar spent until we, for example, like we did today on the 27th Street Bridge, we voted to award the contract on the 27th Street Bridge. That's when we spent the dollars on the 27th Street Bridge. And if the public didn't know that it was an eight and a half million dollar project, and if the contractors didn't know we had estimated it as an eight and a half million dollar project, and we got bids in at $8.6 million, we'd be in a lot better shape than we are today. I don't know that that would have happened on this particular project. As I said earlier, that is a little bit of a more unique project. Midland Avenue is a road. It's, there's nothing special about Midland Avenue. There's no unique construction methodologies or techniques or anything else. It's a road, and there's no reason that that road can't be built for a reasonable amount of money. But, anyway, I will get off that soapbox. So, let's go ahead and call the question.
Engram yes, Goldish yes, Davis yes, Gamba yes, Leyes yes, Voorhees yes, Kopp yes. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you.
All right. Report from city manager.
Okay. The next agenda, we may be trying to run out the e-agenda system. I think we're still determining that, but what we do, we will set up a, I will ask all of you to email Steve or I inside of time if you have trouble with it. It's really easy from your end, so essentially you'll be able to just put in a password, and it's a very easy system to use, store all our items, and it'll really help us with coordination and making sure, like, the right attachments are in the agenda items. So I think you'll really like it, but it's a little bit of a change.
As opposed to Dropbox, so it won't come through Dropbox.
It won't come through Dropbox.
Are you gonna have, we gonna have like a short, maybe, group training, like a work session on this, or is it just...
Or I was gonna have you guys do it individually.
Individually?
If you prefer a work session, the problem is, is now we're, if we are gonna try to do it two weeks from now, we're out of work session time.
Some of us learn tech a little bit slower than others, so individual sessions probably a good idea.
There's still internal discussion among staff on whether we'll be ready to go in two weeks from now, so maybe one month, but it is coming. It's kind of funny, what I did in a different town, it was like the day for months and months and months that everybody focused on here, we're just kind of like flipping a switch. But we'll make sure you guys are trained before we flip that switch. I'm getting lots of requests on other tax questions, on whether you want to support them or not. I know we're kind of running out of time for that as well. I think CMC reached out to me, and I guess since you want where someone else did, I think, yesterday. How do you kind of...
Is there a way you would like me to handle those? They were both, both requests were way too late to get them on this agenda.
And that just reminded me, I also received a request to support a national thing that I'm trying to find right now. I'd say...
It's almost, I mean, because if we put it on the next one...
To decide which ones you want resolutions on, you know, I mean, it's...
Ballots are...
Yeah.
Yeah, ballots will drop.
We will be considering, as I mentioned this morning, or whenever I mention it, we will be considering the Raptor...
Raptor one on the next.
Support for the Raptor tax on our next agenda.
The other one was the county, one that the county is concerned about with oil and gas.
Probably 125, or 112, I think.
Or 112, I mean. You know, that one has a legitimate impact on us. We were told point-blank that if that passes, the county will be supporting us for $0 for 27th Street and $0 for South Midland, because they will see another $10 million drop in their property tax revenue every year. So, you know, it's just one of those things you want to consider, and I would be willing to consider that, whether we want to pass a resolution in support, I mean, in opposition of that particular measure. I don't know what the rest of council feels.
We would almost have to have Carl draft them up ahead of time, not knowing whether you guys want them or not.
I guess what I feel like, as a general rule, we ought not to be, as a council, taking positions on different political things and let the voters do it, but an exception to that would be if there's, if we have a sort of a direct financial impact or interest like this Proposition 112, or like the 74 one that we did tonight. So, 74, I'd be supportive of weighing in on the 112.
Okay, so let's consider 112 as well.
And I would say CMC is, their headquarters here are Glenwood, they're a very large economic driver in this community, and to say that CMC doesn't impact this town very directly...
So, what I will do is, CMC 112 and the Raptor question, all draft resolutions on all three of those, and then you guys can make your decision whether you want to consider it at all. I mean, you don't, if you decide you just don't want to take a position, you don't have to vote it down necessarily. You can just not act, but we'll have all three of those available to you at the next meeting.
I think I'm done.
Speaking of the next meeting, as you will recall, I'm gonna be gone for the evening session. I'll be here for part of the morning session. Anna Edenberg out of my office will be covering the evening. She does a lot of the work at planning commission level, as well as the employment work for the city, so I can't remember if you guys have met Anna or not. They have, you guys have. So, anyway, Anna will be here, and she can deal with the political questions.
I do, I did find the request, it was, it's a request from the former mayor of Meridian, Mississippi, who was on a conference call with me a year or so ago with the Deputy Secretaries of Transportation, and there is a, it's a petition regarding Amtrak, and he's just asking for me to sign the petition. And I guess I'm gonna, I'll read it really quickly here. The text of petition is, "Earlier this year, Congress enacted a fiscal year 2018 bill that includes $2.813 billion directly targeted at intercity rail programs, an increase of $1.3 billion over the fiscal 2017 level. That figure includes $1.9 billion for Amtrak, including $650 million for the NEC and $1.3 billion for the National Network. This represents the largest appropriation in Amtrak's 47-year history. Is with dismay that in response to this record level of public investment, Amtrak has made several service-level decisions that call into question its commitment to the National Network. Amtrak announced in April that it is cutting back food and beverage service on two long-distance services, and it will be eliminating station agents in 15 National Network communities. Additionally, President and CEO Richard Anderson has given public remarks that cast serious doubt on his support of long-distance trains, implying they should be broken up and replaced with state-supported corridor service. Our towns depend upon Amtrak. We have invested our own funds in train stations and passenger rail infrastructure. We support the railroad strategy to grow passenger rail service along heavily traveled corridors, but insist it must happen in addition to National Network service, not at the expense of existing Amtrak communities. Therefore, it is absolutely necessary. The Amtrak reaffirms its commitment to providing long-term sustainable train service to all Amtrak-served communities. Therefore, in light of record public investment in passenger rail and recent actions by Amtrak management affecting National Network service, we, the undersigned, call upon Amtrak to report to Congress and Amtrak-served communities how it will invest these funds to ensure continued high-quality service to all towns on the National Rail system, and how your organization will alter your long-term service line plans in response to this increase over base fiscal year 2018 projections." So, that's the text of the petition, and if you guys authorize me to sign it, I will. I would note that Glenwood Springs is actually the second busiest municipality in the state of Colorado in terms of service by Amtrak, after Denver. So, Amtrak is a benefit to us. This was unknown to me in terms of their intent to reduce service. I don't know if it directly impacts our train service through here or not, but we do have a number of tourists that come in and out on the train. I know it's something that is promoted in our tourism marketing, so. What is your...
It's a full station every day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We definitely have nothing to lose by signing their petition.
Okay.
I'd hate to lose meal service between here and San Francisco.
Have to get off in one, three, seven. Yeah, exactly.
We should be improving rail service across the country, not, not cutting back on it, so.
Okay, I will sign it then. I jumped in the middle of your city manager report. Were you finished?
I'm done.
Okay. City attorney?
I was done before. I thought it was...
Oh, okay. You're okay with shifting your entire budget to the city council?
Absolutely.
All right.
May I?
Yes.
Did anybody, did everybody get one of these?
I did not.
Oh, yeah.
Did anybody get this?
Yes.
Deb Williams came and spoke at our last meeting.
Yeah.
And I wasn't here, so that's why I'm just getting it.
Right. All right.
Do you have other stuff?
Nope. Do you want me to gabble us out?
So, Carl, I have a question for council.
Okay.
So, before we move on, I'd like to go back and at least offer a fix to the absolute fiasco that happened in Item 12 under Council Comments, because we had a, basically, a land issue brought up...
issue brought up. We had a decision by council, by a verbal vote, if not a head nod or whatever, and we had a direction given to our city attorney to go prepare a moratorium on an issue that wasn't properly noticed to the community. We didn't have proper community input for that direction to go to our attorney. So if we're going to have a honest discussion on our next meeting, which I'm perfectly willing to have, I mean, I've actually been, I have not been thinking about a moratorium, but I live downtown too, just like the, downtown too, like the gentleman that was here. I do think we need to address our VRBO policies. I don't know in what manner, because we haven't had the proper discussion, and it wasn't properly noticed. I was not prepared to do that. The public was not properly prepared to come and have the discussion with us. And I think if we move down the road of having a moratorium show up on our table the next meeting without going through the proper procedure, we're going to be at risk of being, having that challenged. And to be honest with you, I think it absolutely stinks from start to bottom. I've actually, it took us seven years to rewrite the code. I mean, I've been up here going through processes that have driven me crazy. It's part of what we're doing. I mean, process is part of what we do up here. Process is part of how this works and how it stays consistent and how this town can stays vibrant over year after year after year is that consistency of policy and quorum of how things are done. That is just absolutely not how it's done. That's what got me worked up. It wasn't necessarily the item. I actually think that item needs work. But the way it was done, I just can't support it. And if it comes to next meeting and that shows up on my desk, I will be absolutely vocal about it, and I don't want to do that to our council. Because I'd like to be, I'd like to discuss this in an honest manner with the public and go from there. And I think we can do that in two weeks, if we don't have that document show up on our table ready for signature in two weeks. Because that, that's just not the way to do it. You have to notice it. This is a land use issue, in my opinion. You may disagree with me, but you are talking about people's rights. People talk about, in my business, they talk about VRBOs all the time and the investment they might make in them or not making them. The real estate community and the investment community, the people who own houses, need to have enough notice to participate in that conversation. And we've had many over the years. That's how we ended up with them. I mean, we went through the proper process to have VRBOs. And the public was noticed and we listened to their discussions, and we made decisions. And this was just completely out of the blue as far as a moratorium goes. I saw it under Council Comments and wondered, that's an odd place to talk about vacation rentals. I thought we were just getting information, because that was all that was in the packet, was numbers, how many they were and, you know, who did what or whatever. But there was no notice about a moratorium. So I think we have gotten the cart before the horse in our process. And I've learned over time that process matters here. As much as I, you guys all know, I'm the worst with that. I hate some of these processes we go through, but it's necessary. So that's, that's my opinion on where we're at. You will have one really, really, really upset council member if I see a moratorium in two weeks ready to sign, because we did not go through the right process, and I will be extremely loud about it. So we can choose to do whatever you guys want to do, but I think we better go through the right process, and we better let the public speak on this.
Thanks, Todd. I agree. Jonathan?
I agree, Todd. I don't think that should have been in our council comments. That was not my intention. I think it got, just put somewhere convenient. I was not...
I saw your text, and I appreciate that. I just...
So I agree. I think as far as, and I don't, I think the gun that we're under of if 74 passes, I think we can notice it starting tomorrow, and people will have our October 18th meeting, and we, that's the first reading. The second reading before it gets passed is our November 1st meeting. So we still have another month for people to get involved and engage. Nothing's going to get signed next week.
I'm okay noticing it tomorrow that we're going to have the discussion, but we've already given direction to start preparing the moratorium without discussion. I mean, I've watched council members over the years change their mind when, when the audience is out there and they say things to us that go, wow, that's actually a really good idea. We shouldn't have a moratorium, we should actually just tweak it a little bit. But we've already got the head nod on the moratorium and an attorney writing it. That's where it's just wrong.
I think we have the head nod on, we want the attorney to put something before us to consider over the next two meetings and over one month. I think that's, that's what I feel that we have. And I think, can we have a conversation, not on fixing the problem in the next month or tweaking it, but can we have the conver, and maybe that's where the conversation goes. But to me, it seems like we should be able to have a conversation in two council meetings in a month.
I tell you what, if I'm mistaken here, and we're just going to see a document, we're not going to vote on a moratorium next week. We're just going to be able to review a document that might take us there. Then I'm fine with that.
I think we'll be voting on the first reading of a moratorium, but nothing will become final.
Yeah, that's not the process that we need to be in. We did not have the proper process for the city to listen to the people to see if we even wanted a moratorium. I'm saying we're a meeting ahead of ourselves. And I don't think you would get the same vote if the public would have had a chance to be in the audience to speak about this issue rather than just quick council comments and a head nod. It's real easy to do that when people aren't out there bringing their experiences to the table and they're, and they're not saying what they want to say and they've been properly noticed to say it. And, and all of a sudden this comes up and we go, yeah, yeah, everyone okay with that? Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, that could happen on a lot of issues. It could happen on zoning. We could go, wow, let's, you know, this could happen on zoning. Everyone good with that? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, that's good, let's do that. How about this regulation? I mean, it's not just VRBOs. This is not the proper procedure for government to function at a high level, in my opinion. And especially on a land use issue, when you're taking a right away that is actually in the code now, is it used by right that you can do, and we're going to take it away, but without the proper procedure.
A moratorium is not a taking of rights.
Sure it is.
But, but, Steve, or Steve, Todd, how did you vote a couple of years ago about a moratorium on new development in South Glenwood because of the condition of South Midland?
No, and it was all notice that we were going to have that discussion, that we were going to talk about it. People came in and said yes, no, maybe. They had their discussion. Again, I might even vote for it. I agree with you, we need to have the discussion, but the process is important. And if we're going to skirt processes, let's skirt it on other land use issues. I'm pretty sure we're going to end up in front of a judge then. This is just not one you skirt, in my opinion.
So if, if I can offer some comments, one is, is that the preparation of an ordinance isn't the passage of an ordinance, certainly. The other one is, is that, while I know you really wanted to punt this a year down the road, your attorney at the next meeting will advise you that you're not going to be able to do that, because if you're going to adopt a moratorium, it means you, you can only do that if you're actually going to do something. So it would mean that you would undertake immediately to, to do something with those regulations, right? Like typically you don't adopt a moratorium of over three to six months at any given time, and it's with very specific conditions under which that moratorium would be lifted and the work that you would be doing during that time period. And I, just there again, because we were in the middle of council comments, you're not going to get a full discussion from me on all those points. It would have been with my cover memo and you would have seen an ordinance that was structured that way. If you want to extend it again, you can always do that if you're, if you feel like you're making progress, but there are, there are risks with a moratorium of any type. So I guess where I thought we were going for the next meeting was a discussion on whether or not that was the appropriate policy choice, and then what the schedule looked like for addressing the issues to start that conver, to get that conversation going. I guess I didn't view it as, and my comment on Amendment 74 was just that, you know, there is, depending on what you want to do, that creates a certain sense of urgency, but the reality is if Amendment 74 passes, whatever regulations you adopt when you lift the moratorium may be subject to, you know, you're going to be at risk, right? Doesn't matter. I think it goes more to the idea, is the community in a place where they want to hit the pause button, like we did with, I think we did that with the marijuana regulations as well. Are we in a place where we want to hit the pause button? And certainly noticing that we're potentially going to consider a moratorium on them will get the public to come out and provide some comment with that question.
You're going to have the room full.
People. And, and to some degree, that's what you're looking for.
I agree.
So, so I guess where I'm going with all that is that I don't know that, with where we're at, I don't know that it's the worst thing in the world to have a draft of what that might look like. It doesn't mean that you have to take action on it. But it does potentially help frame, if you want to pot, hit the pause button, it frames what that would look like.
Again, I'm okay reading a draft of what this might look like, but we're getting one meeting ahead of ourselves as far as adopting anything or voting on anything until the public has a chance to comment on what they might like to see in a moratorium, how many months they might like to see it, what type of pause they might want, what type of ideas they might have as opposed to a moratorium. Maybe they have four or five tweaks to this thing that might work better. So I would like to hear all of that before we have something to sign in our hands.
Point of interest, are we able to, if you prepare something to have before us, and we hear from the public, the next meeting, and the meeting after that, and in between over the next month through various channels and people that are picking our ear, are we able to change the moratorium? Absolutely. I mean, it's a, you know, any ordinance is a living document until it's adopted, and then it's a living document. By the next ordinance, it changes it, right? So, I mean, I actually don't view it as a bad thing necessarily to have a draft at the next meeting if we're going to talk about short-term rentals or vacation rentals. Because it, there again, it just, you know, it's one of the tools available to you. It certainly will get people to come out and talk about it. It's going to have, like I said, a variety of ad alternates, if you will, from the bidding world of, you know, do you want this in, do you want that in, do you want three months, do you want six months, what do you want, what are your expectations of staff during that time period? Because like I said, I'm probably not going to let you off the hook on, if you're going to adopt a moratorium, it means that we're going to undertake some, some work to look hard at these regulations, not just wait it out until a different time period. I mean, it's going to have to be you guys that start this. And, and I know, I mean, I understand the, we're in this weird period where we're almost to the end of a, of a council, but the reality is you're almost always to, almost to the end of a council or right at the beginning of one. I mean, it's a cycle that we go through. So from that standpoint, you don't have to take action on it. You don't have to adopt it the way I might draft it, and you give me all kinds of direction. It's legislation, so it's sausage, right? All kinds of stuff goes into it to get the final product.
I'll be short. I was certainly felt blindsided by that conversation of moratorium as well. I saw it as a discussion item put up. I thought it was just a report, that was the end of it, kind of just to bring us up to date. Your comment that we would table that discussion until the next council is seated, I'm of course offended by. They hate to sit up here and feel like a lame duck, or that the council that is going to stick around is not considering the council that's leaving. And we're not going to sit up here and start tabling items until the next council. That's my comment.
Thanks, Steve. Rick?
I waived my time.
Thank you. Shelley?
I don't think I have any comments either.
If I could waive my time, it'd be six months from now.
Bye, bye, bye. That kind of way.
Yeah, I, you know, Todd, I think, at least the way I am looking at it was, you know, I mean, I saw those numbers and have been hearing from people, and I thought, we've got an issue here. And to try to figure out the whole VRBO thing in a month or whatever is probably not realistic. It's very complicated. That's how I kind of landed on maybe hitting the pause button, if you will. But the way I view it was really, I think what we were doing tonight was not saying, you know, let's draft something, draft it so we can approve it next week. I view it more of, let's get this on the agenda for the next meeting so we can have that discussion with the public. Now, I think it will be helpful to have something from Carl, because then the public has something to kind of look at, and we have something to frame the discussion, as opposed to everyone showing up and sort of, hey, let's talk about VRBOs, and everybody's sitting, okay, what do you want to talk about? So I mean, it gives us something to frame the discussion. I would anticipate that by the time we're done with public input and discussion, our thoughts may change, whatever it is Carl throws out is likely to be modified in many, in many ways, and it'll go back for another drafting, or we'll just kill the idea or whatever. But, you know, I sort of view what we did tonight is just say, let's get this on the agenda for a serious public discussion. That's the way I view it.
Yeah, I just know past councils, and this council, you know, is doing what it's doing, and is, you know, we've always taken moratoriums extremely serious. I mean, that's a, that's a, hey, nobody can do this anymore, you're done. That is, that is a land use decision. The decision to not allow development in South Glenwood, you know, while the Grand Avenue Bridge was being built, was a land use decision. You could no longer do this. That's a big deal in this town.
And this is a big deal too.
It is.
Yeah, I agree.
So in order to have the proper noticing, to let people come in and have that discussion, it usually takes that, and then it takes a first reading of what kind of was discussed and agreed to that night, or not, or it falls, and then you get a second reading. I'm just saying, don't skirt a moratorium issue, they're too important. They're too important for process, they're too important for trust in the government. They're, they're just too important. And that's coming from a guy who doesn't like much of these processes. So, and again, I'm willing to have the discussion. I think it's an honest discussion to have. There's things that I don't like about our VRBOs also, so I welcome the discussion. Moratorium is a big, that's a big word for me. I'd rather just fix what people don't like, or choose not to be in the industry at all, whatever, whatever we're going to do. But moratoriums just put clouds on things, and people wonder, you know, do I get to do it sometime? Again, maybe when, it's just, it's such uncertainty. So I just don't like moratoriums, but...
Yeah, but we'll have the discussion and hear what people say.
I'm perfectly willing to have the discussion. I just wanted, I had to say that, or I was going to be mad at all you guys until next two weeks, and I didn't want to do that, because I appreciate this council, I really do. But that got me, because I, I've sat here for seven years going through processes that drive me insane, and it's like, we cannot skirt processes. If I've learned that, everyone else has to.
And to that point, I mean, you know, there's, there's oftentimes requests for, could we put this on the agenda or that item on the agenda?
Oh, I was told no for two years.
Well, I know. That's why we haven't used city manager.
I was told, no, you can't talk about that.
But I would just encourage everyone on the council to recognize that even if it's a very important issue that we really need to discuss, if staff isn't able to prepare something for us to have all of the information we need to have an intelligent discussion about it, it may just need to wait for a meeting or two, you know, and, and that's just the reality. And that kind of goes to Todd's point, that, you know, if we were going to have this discussion, which we kind of had what would have normally been the first discussion in, regarding this issue, we had that tonight during council comments, we would have received a much more detailed packet, I believe, with a lot more information. And, you know, and I'm not knocking your anecdotal experience, but because of one anecdotal experience and one guy on Blake, we're moving in this direction, you know, whereas we didn't get input from the rest of the community on this. And I have to say, I agree with Todd. And, and I also agree with his point that, that the process is slow, and it, you know, coming from someone in business, who owns his own business, and when I decide we're going this way in business, we're going this way right now, we're not going this way next week, or in a month, or two months, but government doesn't work like business. And it took me, not seven years to figure that out, but, you know, maybe six years, nine months. But, you know, it's, and there is a valid reason for that. So I would just encourage the rest of council to understand that even when, when we feel the urgency on a particular issue, sometimes we just have to be a little bit patient to let it get queued up so that we have all of the information necessary to have a full, open discussion about it. Go ahead, Jonathan.
Thank you. My intention was not to subvert anything.
I know that, when you, I...
I just want to keep making that clear.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I didn't get that at first, but I get it. I read your text and I accept, and I appreciate that.
I appreciate that too. I, I think that maybe in the future for process, not this cat's out of the bag, but I think in the future that if, if any of us wants something on the agenda, I was told that if you want something on the agenda and it doesn't fit, you know, hey, it's a couple of weeks before the...
weeks before the next meeting, and we've already had our one, just two council people need to request it be on the agenda. So, maybe we should, as just a process, amend that. If two people want it on the agenda, that they make it known in the work session prior, because if I would have made it, if I would have been available to make it, or that would have been the norm, the group norm, I would have made that known today for future agendas. I want to see this on the next agenda. Here's what I'm going for. Here's what I'm thinking. It could have been whatever. I think that would have been better, because then it would have been, well, I can't go under council comments, go to regular agenda. It should say moratorium. Hey, I have a lot of people who are interested. I need to let them know. So, I think in the future, let's try to make that happen, and I'm pointing the finger at me. Conversely, I'd like to make an amendment to my one-year moratorium request, and in light of Steve's comment, I did not mean to marginalize you guys, and I completely understand you're being offended, and I get that. I just assumed that we'd be talking about this next April, but.
Thanks.
It was more of, this is a really contentious issue. I don't think it's going to get solved in the next six months, but maybe that's just me being very pessimistic. And so, if my fellow yea votes on this, or head nods, because we didn't take a vote, were to agree, I would like to amend the one-year moratorium that you're going to prepare to whatever the first date of the next council, getting six months. And that way, that requires us to have to work on that, and it also requires the new council to take a vote to either reauthorize that, to continue working on it, or to accept the findings that we came up with during the six months.
So, let me just, let me see if I can address that.
Sure.
So, before we agree to another land use decision tonight, that's already got me a little, let's have the discussion in two weeks.
Okay, that's fine. I was trying to do it out of deference.
No, no, and I appreciate what you were trying to do, but I really think, am I mistaken that this is a land use issue, when we stop, when we stop people from doing something that's in our court that they can no longer do?
It's a legislative action. A moratorium is a legislative action, and it can apply to land use. Most typically, it applies to land use or some kind of licensing. It's where you see it most often, marijuana being, stores being a great example. You know, giving yourself time to work on new regulations because of some change in state laws. The place where we use it most often, frankly, is that we get something handed down out of the legislature. It's going to be effective July 1, and so you adopt a moratorium until you have time to put regulations together, because the state legislature oftentimes doesn't think about that. So, it is, I wouldn't call it a land use issue as much as a property rights issue, a little more broad-based than land use specifically. It is something in there again. You know, you would get a much fuller discussion from me on the limits of a moratorium, the requirements, the risks that would go along with anything that I would draft, typically as a cover memo, or as a privileged and confidential memo to go along with that, than you would tonight, because frankly, regardless of what you tell me on the length, you're going to get something that I believe comports with state law. So, while I appreciate the direction, there's going to be some parameters that you can't avoid, or you're putting yourself more at risk if you don't abide by. So.
So, we have a good lawyer.
I mean, those are all the things, I guess, I was feeling I was missing, because we've been here before, and it's like, whoa, wait a minute. There's a lot to this.
You know, I guess, if I can make an observation, is that oftentimes, things come up during council comments, and you guys are like, hey, we should take a look at this. This one was a little bit more of a hot-button issue, right? But oftentimes, things come up, and you guys are like, hey, maybe we should look at this, or could you, you know, draft that. I mean, I get, you know, it comes out of those council comments a fair amount that I do some drafting, so you guys have something to work off of. I think what was different tonight is that it is an issue that, and I think it's reflective of the community, it was an issue for Todd on, in terms of process. I know that it's an issue for a couple of you guys, that it's just the community is pushing on you, and so it's a charged issue, and I think that's a great example of one that is harder to manage in that situation. But, you know, I get a lot of direction from council comments, as does Deborah, on queuing things up for you guys later on, which is really what I took it as. I didn't take it as the end of the conversation. But, so, I'll put something together. I'm sure I'll work with Jen and Deborah on having more information in a packet for you guys to talk about it in the next meeting, and you can do whatever you want with it.
You know, one question that I will ask is, I know this isn't the only relevant issue to consider in this regard, but do we separate out the accommodations taxes collected from short-term rentals versus the rest of the hotel motel bed and breakfast? Are we able to come up with what that amount might be?
Yeah, I think we could do that. You won't get specific addresses that are genetically, but in the aggregate, I think we can parse it at that level.
Yes, we have not done that in the past, but this came in my attention a little while ago, so we're going to start doing that this month.
Yeah, I was going to say, I mean, the good news is it's less than 100 individual tax returns that you'd have to look at.
Okay. Well, since we've just been wasting time all night here, I'm, never mind. I was going to do a Dave filibuster. It was the best of times. It was the worst of times. It was the age of wisdom. It was the age of foolishness.
Can you save these for council comments?
It was the epic of belief. It was the epic of incredulity.
Is that what Dave wrote, read that?
No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. We're adjourned.
That was a short filibuster. Dave took four minutes.
I just can't do it.